Like to call to order the special meeting. Let me get to the special meeting on my papers. No, just the agenda. So this is a study session. Comments at a special meeting are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes per item. Mario, you're gonna do the presentation, correct?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. The, so this evening is our second study session. You may recall we did this back, I think it was early August. So I'll have you start here. On state, stationary mobile vendors and vendor stands. So since that time, staff has been preparing some information as requested by council. As well as just, this is a constantly changing landscape. One thing your council should know, note, is this is a statewide issue of concern. Pretty much every city up and down the state is dealing with pretty much the same issue that, and some of the concerns that council has raised. I want to give thanks to Shawna, our new HR director. She actually forwarded me a link to this roundtable put on by the League of Cities, which I participated in last week. And it was actually very informative and very helpful. So I'm going to start by sharing just a few highlights from that roundtable and then delve into the material. So as I mentioned, this is up and down the state. There were folks on that call from geographies, big and small, different, different parts of the state. All up and down the state. And one of the issues that was raised was issues with citations. Only upwards of thirty percent of the citations are ever collected on, on these vendors. And again, cities of different sizes all face a lot of these challenges. The focus was recent state legislation, which was passed SB nine forty-six, which was passed back in twenty eighteen. SB nine seventy-two was actually last year, coming to effect this past year. Full effect beginning of January. And these are focused really on sidewalk vending. The consensus during the roundtable was that these laws really have severely limited the authority and what cities can do and counties to regulate sidewalk vendors. There we go. So why these laws were passed, really, in reading the legislative actions, both of these laws were passed really to try to assist, to decriminalize street vending is really what you'll see in a lot of the literature. And the focus was really on these small vendors. Many of them are immigrants that try to encourage entrepreneurialism, but try to make sure that they follow a permitting pathway and a way to do this legally. And also in a sanitary manner, working with the health, county health departments and the like. So you'll see, kind of, these are the small vendors, a push cart, we call them paleteros in Spanish, but they sell ice cream and frozen goods from that little, the one you see on the left. And then there's a hot dog vendor. You'll see those if anyone's been to any major concert or sporting event in this state. Usually the first thing you smell when you get outside is all the hot dog vendors that seem to congregate near the sidewalks. And then there's a tamale vendor on the, on the right. And so I think that's the intent of these regulations, which aim to limit enforcement actions, really limiting them to be administrative citations for folks that are not following the rules. But really with a big focus on making sure there's a streamlined process for them to actually obtain legal permits to do this legally. And so again, some of these are transitory, like the push cart vendor. Some of them are on the sidewalk, but usually they're smaller operations. There's supposed to be clearance for folks to continue to navigate the sidewalk. What came out of the roundtable that most of the cities in our state are struggling with are not necessarily these particular vendors, but these types of operations. So this is an example of one very recently in our city that Manny, who's in the audience, dealt with. And so you'll see it's spread out all over the sidewalk. It's really a large kitchen. It's something you'd find in a stationary mobile food vendor, in a food truck. But actually without, you know, some of the apparatus, the type of sinks that they need to have. And it's really a kitchen outside under tent, taking up a large portion of the sidewalk. You can see there's hardly any space for someone to walk by, not to mention that, you know, there's probably an open flame and different things going on there that are not safe. And so what seems to be occurring, we found it to be the case in working with our counterparts in code enforcement here in Tulare, but even in our region, but really statewide, is there will be these large operations, a lot of them based out of larger cities like LA, San Francisco, that will drop these folks off. And they don't obtain permits, they kind of just set up ad hoc to vend. And so these are the types of vendors that are creating a lot of issues for cities up and down the state. And I think frankly, the vendors that are doing this are one of two things, probably both. It's a combination of factors or misinterpreting the state law, which did ease requirements for kitchen facilities and things of that sort, only for cooked items. So if someone's reheating hot dogs, or if there's tamales that are already cooked in a, in a kitchen and brought onsite and are just being heated, that's very different from raw meat and things that really need to go through the normal permitting process. A lot of these seem to pop up during the COVID closures, when a lot of restaurants were closed and have only proliferated. Again, some of this is being misinterpreted. These types of operations are usually, they're not able to be permitted because they don't meet the requirements. And in a lot of these cases, they'll send one organization or two, will, will send a lot of vendors to different cities. And so it's creating issues for cities, for enforcement agencies, for health departments, but also for the local vendors, the ones that the laws were supposedly intended to help was your local kind of, you know, independent vendor, or maybe it's a family and they have a food truck or a food stand. Because these folks will come in, they'll, they don't go through and get permits. And they undercut the local vendors and they go from city to city. And again, with the issues with citations, it becomes very challenging to document these. So again, this is a statewide issue, but we're going to go back now and focus on Tulare and kind of where we left off the study session last time and continues the conversation. So cities really fall into two camps, is what was apparent. So a lot of cities really have, don't have a history of dealing with street vendors, whether sidewalk vendors or stationary mobile food vendors. So there's a lot of cities that are making headlines. And you'll see headlines like, oh, city of so-and-so is cracking down on vendors. And really what it is, is that they never had a protocol, a permitting process or procedures. And frankly, probably didn't have anything in their municipal code to deal with these types of vendors. So they're all rushing and scrambling to try to adopt, again, code language as well as permitting procedures. The majority of cities of a certain size, especially, our city is, falls into the second camp, which we have a history of working with street vendors. We have an ordinance that meets state law. We also have a protocol procedures, I'll go more into that a little later, of how we, we do have a process for folks to actually vend, be a sidewalk vendor, have a stationary mobile food operation in a legal manner. And so you see the concerns are a little different. The folks that really have never dealt with street vending, with this new proliferation, this new wave of these larger operations. Again, some of them unfortunately seem to be tied to human trafficking, some criminal organizations. So some folks on the call were in the law enforcement. You know, some folks were with law enforcement, others were code enforcement, community development. And those cities are scrambling to deal with that, but also just how to permit the ones that are local to their cities and help them through the process. And then for cities that do have a process in place, an example of this was like the city of Santa Ana was on the call down in, in Orange County. And they said, we've had legal street vending since the early nineteen nineties. I used to routinely have over two hundred permitted vendor, street vendors. But these operations again are coming from outside their area and they're not going through the proper channel. So there's plenty of people locally that are willing to, once educated, follow the process, obtain a permit, work with the health department. Again, the largest issue seems to be these folks that have no interest in obtaining a permit. And again, citations have a very limited, if any, effect on their operations. So the consensus from, from that roundtable from cities was to continue to work. And this is, you know, through platforms like the League of Cities, through your state legislatures, through city councils, to kind of let the state know some of these issues that these laws, while well-intended, are creating. You know, and I think, again, well-intended, but it seems like these larger operations are the ones taking advantage of the streamlining provisions. And they really are affecting some vendors that frankly, have been in the community for many years, operating legally. So with that summary from the state level, let's focus in on where we left off last time. So there's a few items I made note of that at the last study session that council had asked for. So council had expressed a desire to find out about greater enforcement tools. How do we increase compliance as well as education? So for example, one question that was asked, can, can we do something to increase citations? So similar to what was done right with the fireworks ordinance. We felt a lot of folks were not following that, those laws. And so there was an increase in the fees to try to gain further compliance. The other thing council requested was for staff to report back information and details on what the likely outcome would be if we did revise the ordinance as, as had been proposed over the past year or so to. We have these provisions in the current code that limit vendors to be at least five hundred feet from establishments which have an ABC, an alcohol beverage control license for onsite consumption, as well as three hundred feet from other approved vendors. What would it look like if we did loosen those requirements? Would that open up more locations for vendors to locate at? And if so, would it be many more, how many more? You know, what's the likely outcome? And then there was another question that came up or in our request, which is what, what is staff doing already for education? And what can we do to incentivize compliance in addition to the enforcement we talked about for these vendors? Especially the ones that do not comply after being informed of the process. So again, for sidewalk vendors, so SB nine forty-six and nine seventy-two really focus on sidewalk vendors, which were the, the photos I showed, especially in the first example. Just the one where I had the three pictures. So the big, large operation, we're seeing that more and more, but that's not, I don't think that was the intent of the legislature. We'll have to go back, you know, ask, ask those folks. But those are the ones that frankly, it's almost impossible for them inhering from other health departments to be permitted because of the requirements that come with preparing raw food and things of that sort. It's really for fruit vendors, things that have limited preparation out, outside of the kitchen. That, that's what those two laws focused in on. And so what that did in effect for sidewalk vendors, which in our city, in our code and in our permitting procedures, we call them vendor stands, it really limits what enforcement tools. So going back to the question of enforcement that staff has at their disposal to be able to further curtail, limit, you know, severely cite, for example, some of these vendors. As, so as I mentioned, that it limits cities to only issue minimal administrative citations for sidewalk vendors if they're found operating without a permit. The city can regu, can only regulate time, place and manner of sidewalk vending. And again, it has to be directly related to objective health, safety and welfare, welfare concerns. If that language sounds familiar, council may recall, there were revisions made to the city's code with regard to like flower vendors that were operating downtown. Because we were having an issue of people running out of their vehicles across traffic to buy from vendors on the sidewalk. And so you have to make sure that anything you do to put limitations on these vendors is directly tied to health, safety and welfare concerns. Limits the hours of operation, you can do that, but you cannot be more restrictive than the hours of other businesses operating on the same street. You can prohibit sidewalk vending on private property, but only if directly related again to health, safety and welfare. You cannot arbitrarily, like for example, put a cap or a limit on the number of sidewalk vendors that operate in the city. At least if, if those, if the reason for it is, is a competition with storefront businesses. Cities and, and health departments are allowed to confiscate food items if they find a vendor, a sidewalk vendor that's operating without a permit due to the inherent danger in, in having food, especially raw food to be cooked and prepared that has not passed certification by the county health department. And so that's for sidewalk vendors. Turning our attention to stationary mobile vendors, one thing council should note is SB nine forty-six and nine seventy-two do not apply to stationary mobile vendors, only to food vendors. So stationary mobile vendors are enclosed, what we call food trucks, right? They have sink facilities and a variety of facilities that are inspected by the health department. So on those, there's a lot more leeway in terms of what cities and counties can still enforce in terms of having, including having more comprehensive requirements. Unlike sidewalk vendors, stationary mobile food vendors can still be cited, fined and prosecuted. Enforcement, one thing that can also be done is a, an idea that, that staff has talked about and council's mentioned is maybe we also increase enforcement to extend to the property owners. So we do have cases in our city where you'll have property owners that will cycle through vendors and just, you know, they'll come to an agreement. Okay, I'll charge you so much for rent, get your permits with the city. Oftentimes, the permits will be in the name of the, almost every time will be in the name of the vendor, not the property owner. Or if it's at a gas station, the, the operator. But then they, I mean, this is, these are just my words, in my opinion, but they're, they get greedy and they ask for more rent. And they want a new vendor to locate because there's a new vendor that's wanting to pay more money. And so staff is like, well, wait a minute, you signed off and said, this is the only vendor you're going to allow. We're going to have access to your restrooms and now you're kicking them out and bringing on a new vendor. And so one thing that we can do, that's not limited by new state laws, is make sure the property owners are also playing by, by fair rules and are consistent. And not allowing multiple applicants at the same time. So in other words, if they agreed to sign off on a vendor for the length of the period, especially if the, if the permits in the vendor's name, they should not be cycling through vendors at their location. One thing we can do is obtain further direction from the city attorney on whether there's a limit on violation of fines. So again, the fireworks example, how high can we go for stationary mobile vendors at least? And so those are not limited to the administrative citation. And then this is a map and.
Mario, real quick, how would you stop that? How would you stop the property owner from, from just shuffling from one to the other based, you know? Who, who's the highest bidder and being unfair to them? I mean, by limiting the number of times they could apply something like that?
Yes, I'll give you an example. We did, we do have an example in the city. We had a permitted stationary mobile food vendor. She'd been operating there for, gosh, I want to say at least eight years. Always renews her permit on time, never had an issue. We had a vendor from out of the area that came in and, and talked to the property owner, who also happens to be gas station operator and, and they came to an agreement that he'd be willing to pay more rent. They essentially forced her out, kicked her out. And the, both the property owner, as well as this new vendor have been essentially coming to city staff and saying, hey, she's gone. Can we take over that space and that location? And so from staff's perspective, because we, in working with our, our colleagues in code enforcement, have obtained all this information of what really happened there, have told them, well, there's a valid permit approved by the planning commission at this location. It doesn't expire for another year, meaning we are not going to approve another vendor at this location until that permit expires. And so hopefully that's one way to discourage them from just taking the highest bidder, is you're limited to. Now, it's different if the vendor, we have had instances where a vendor will try a location, especially if they're new. You know, they have to, they don't know if that location will work out. And so they decide by their own accord that they're going to walk away from the permit and either go to another city. We've had some vendors apply for a permit at a different location if that one didn't work out. And so by their own will, they, you know, relocated, that's different. But if they're being forced out, then that's, you know, that's one thing we've been doing to try to limit just a cycle through of, of, of vendors, because we want some stability too in our vendor community.
Mario, a quick question, where, where do the free phone people line up, with which category?
They would be a vendor stand. So they're not selling food, but they have a, a, usually it's a business license through an organization. And they usually have locations in different cities. My understanding is I think the phones, they call them free phones, but the service, there's a service they sign up for. I believe if you, if you qualify for certain government benefits, you're eligible for such services. So that's what they do, they do come in, they get a vendor stand permit, they have the same insurance requirements. And that's a constant. We have a few that have been operating here now for a little while. But, and I know, I think some of our, actually, I know some of you on the council have been copying on these emails that will come to us where they were looking out and like, hey, that one's over there, they don't have a permit, they don't have, they didn't have to provide insurance like we did. Can code enforcement go out and cite them or check, you know, check what's going on there? And again, even though we have limitations on sidewalk vending, we do have a procedure and they, they do have to come in and register and obtain a permit. So same with the, for the phone vendors, they follow the same process. So the map here shows that we worked, thank you, Justin and J S, he helped, kind of helped us here with a map that essentially what we did is we took a map of the city, took in the zones where vendors are allowed. And we placed a buffer of what does it look like if we, what does it look like now with five hundred feet from ABC licenses and three hundred feet from other vendors, right? So that was, that was mapped out and, and then we removed that requirement. And then we even further refined it. It's not going to be perfect, there's probably a couple of places we may need to, to clean up here. But then eliminate, we have, have other provisions for vendors. So for example, you'll remember last study session, I mentioned that we have a lot of requests for vendors on West Street, which you, you can see on the west side, there's not a lot of green. So green are the areas where potentially a vendor can be allowed, or at least where it meets some of these provisions. See these parameters we put in place. But that's because any of the lots that are there are vacant. It has to be a paved lot, there has to be a business operating there. So there's a lot of requirements in the current revisions, aside from just the five hundred to three hundred feet. Some of them are related to health and to the health department, right? They want these folks to operate in paved areas, not in, you know, for sanitary reasons, as you can imagine. If they're out there cooking, it shouldn't be a dirt field or dirt and dust is constantly being kicked up. And so there's a number of provisions, so it really limits the locations, I mean, to the, and a lot of this kind of makes sense. If, if you know the city, you see a lot of green down and kind of our industrial corridor there on K, up on J as you go through. Why? Maybe because those places have less restaurants and less alcohol licenses. So they're less affected by those provisions. They tend to be paved, there tend to be businesses operating there. That's why I think that, that shows in green. That's why I think that that shows in green, um, you'll notice, I don't know, just to call another example, up by prosperity. Um, it's our main retail corridor up there. There's a few spots in green, but there's also a lot of businesses with A B C licenses. Um, I think we have one vendor, a vendor stand as well. So then that that adds the three hundred foot buffer. So this is, I mean, it's just rough. It's just kind of a first wrap, but just to kind of give counsel just visually an idea of what it would look like. If we did, uh, what areas would be opened up to further vendors, which was one of the questions.
I attended the, I attended the. Last planning commission meeting and there were two requests on that agenda that night alone. How many do we have of, uh, in the city that that the planning commission has approved?
Yeah, we we tend to always stay around thirteen to fourteen. Sometimes it drops. You know, the lowest I've seen drop downs, maybe nine or ten. The most I've ever seen is fifteen.
Was that unusual that night to have?
Oh, to have to, no. Um, so again, we're one of the few cities that require a conditional use permit for these vendors. So they have to go to planning commission to get that conditional use permit approved. Um, so we do have. You know, fairly regularly because they all expire at different times. So throughout the year, you'll see these permits on the planning commission agenda. Uh, that particular evening, we had one that was a, actually. It was the vendor I just gave an example of. She had been booted out of her location, been there for a long time. She managed to find another location that a vendor had vacated. And managed to get the permission of the property owner, met all the other requirements. So she was applying to try a new location. Um, that was the first one, I believe. And then we also had one completely new location. But it met the requirements kind of across from the prosperity, uh, sports park. Um, not a lot of food options there and there is a gas station on the corner.
That was, I think, at prosperity and East Street, is that correct? Yeah.
So moving on, e- education potential, well, first, any questions, uh, on what I've shared so far before I kind of move on just a few more slides? And then there'll be time for for obvious open discussion and more questions. And so the, uh, next slide here, so in terms of education and potential incentives, this is just a scan of, um. Uh, this pamphlet that was created by our colleagues in code enforcement, um, with assistance from planning staff. That it's in English and in Spanish, and these are handed out to vendors. Either they're, you know, whether they're they're recited or they don't know, they're new to Talarri, or they didn't know about the process. So this is kind of where it starts. It's like, well, you didn't know the, do you need a permit? You do need a permit. Here are the, uh, requirements and and go talk to the city's, uh, planning division in city hall. And so you'll see it has requirements for obtaining a vendor stand, which are. You know, in the state laws, they refer to a sidewalk vendors. And then there's the requirements for stationary mobile food vendors, uh, the food trucks or food trailers. And so it lists all of the requirements, where to call, uh, including starting with the health department if you're selling food. Um, the cost of the permits, other requirements like the written permission from the property owner. The applications that are required. Um, so we we provide this to the vendors. And then it, you know, when I was working more at the counter as a planner, one of the, one thing that was nice to see is some of these vendors that were new. Started sharing this information and some of these vendors know each other. They started. You know, informing other vendors like, hey, you can go to city hall, you can talk to this person and they can help you through the process and. Uh, we we do see kind of a range. There's some vendors that just, you know, balk at having to pay for a permit. Again, with our locals, that tends to be less likely because they are local and they're gonna be setting up multiple days a week. Where we have an issue are the folks that are coming in out of town and setting up ad hoc. And they don't want to obtain a permit or go through this process because they're intending to kind of go from town to town and have multiple locations. So, uh. You know, but a lot of folks, once they find out about the process, really didn't, uh. It is still a cost. Uh, mostly that's what, especially the ones that are new and are starting out, they struggle with the cost. For a conditional use permit, especially when you have cities like Visalia, which does not require conditional use permit, they charge a lot less. They do limit it. You have to move after six months and they have other provisions. So each city's different, right? But once folks are informed of the process, um, again, we usually obtain compliance. But we, it tends to, and Manny's here, he can answer some some questions, but from from our conversations, it seems like it'll go in waves. And you know, sometimes you'll get a wave of folks that'll show up and, you know, Manny and his team are out there and. Talking to people, issuing citations, informing them, come in, get a permit. And the ones again that are intending to follow the process will come in, they'll get permitted. Uh, usually I would find out about the weekend operations because Monday morning that I'll be lined up at city hall, uh, trying to get the permit, um. And then the ones that don't want to play by the rules tend to s- move on to the next town. And then it'll be quiet for a while and then we might get a wave, especially they tend to show up, not surprisingly, around the fair. Fair parade, the the fair parade, uh, and the, um, Christmas parade, which we just had. So any any major events, right? The these folks are locating in places where they see a lot of the traffic or a lot of vehicles. Um, that seems to be, uh, the interest there. So this is just, uh, one, one tool we use to to educate folks. About our process. So other ideas, potential incentives, one thing we talked about with you, council, at the last study session. Uh, Mark presented this idea of like a a pilot, a corridor or food truck lot. To maybe have, especially the food trucks that are starting out. That's something you see in various cities. Um, another thing too, and. I don't know how this plays into the contract with the operator mark, but like, for example, we have the concert series of Zumwalt Park. Maybe there's food truck nights or something in association with that, whereas an incentive for folks coming in and getting a permit, they can be one of the featured. Uh, food trucks on a rotating basis or a food vendor, right? Um, so there's different ideas that, uh, staff can implement at the at council's direction. Um, one idea that came out of the League of Cities Roundtable was hosting a town hall or forum with local vendors. To provide, uh, one, an overview of the permitting process and kind of having everyone, hey, interested in vending into Larry, whether. Whether you've been doing it in other cities, have experience, or you're new, you want to know where to start out. I remember when I worked at the, on the, at the counter, we'd get a lot of folks that are just, it was just an idea in their head. Hey, what do I have to do to sell hot dogs? What do I have to do to do this? So that's something that I guess some cities have done is they'll host this. Town hall forum for vendors to understand and know what the process looks like. Uh, for staff to answer questions and also to continue to build rapport and relationships. That was another common theme. Uh, hearing from my counterparts in other cities is. Everyone kind of knows our local vendor community. They they tend to be, um, well informed. They tend to be coming in to renew their permits. They want to follow the rules. They want to have a a legitimate business, even if it's a small operation, it's not a storefront. Um, and so, and it also helps because those tend to also be advocates and maybe Manny can can second this, but I remember. One of the things that would happen constantly was. We'd have the permitted vendors, they're the ones that are the first ones picking up the phone and saying, hey, we have this vendor down the street. We've never seen them. They're sitting up without a permit and well, one, it's competition for their business, but also they followed all the rules in the process. And so they want to make sure everyone else is playing by the same rules. Uh, so those are some ideas for education incentives. And again, as I'm getting close to wrapping up the presentation. Drawing the focus back again for council, any direction you provide this evening in terms of, uh, regulations, uh, any. Any policy that may come out of this, keep in mind, wha- what is council's goal? So. If the goal is to eliminate or reduce a number of vendors, if council feels we have too many and it's, and that's an issue. Keep in mind a couple of things. One is remember state law really limits, it's gonna be very difficult to limit sidewalk vendors. For stationary mobile food vendors, there are, um, cities that can, that, and we we can do the same. You can put a cap if you think we have too many. But there's also different ways to do this. So, uh, some cities use overlay zones or certain vendor districts and vendors can locate in those areas. Visalia and Turlock are examples of that. Um, some cities have vendor lots, uh, that are created, uh, Merced, for example. They allow a property owner to come in and obtain a C U P for a food truck lot. And then you could, they'll manage and make sure that all the vendors that are. Look, operating there have the proper permits, have a business license, kind of the way we do now with special events. We work with the special event organizer. We make sure and communicate to the special event organizer. That, um, please just make sure all your vendors have business licenses, they're selling food, they have their food permit. And so that's another, another way to to limit, but still allow vending. Um, there's other ideas, right? The city of Fresno, I don't know that this is legal with sidewalk vendors anymore. But certainly with stationary mobile food vendors, you could do something like this where you put a limit. That they can only operate a certain distance from restaurants during the restaurants operating hours. Again, I'd I'd want to just confer with our city attorney to make sure we can legally, uh, be that restrictive, but. There are different ideas. If if the goal is to limit vendors or reduce the number we have. And then if the goal is to bring.
That's what Fresno has done? Is that right?
That's one example, one city that, yeah, does that. They they do put limitations on how close they are to. Now, we do have things in our code already on how close they can be to like doors of, front door of a business, for example. How close to an intersection, but I think they may have some explicit language in terms of how, when a restaurant is operating, uh, how far they have to be away. And again, my my only question is, we just have to make sure that that's legal and that anything we do, we're not setting ourselves up for, because some of these groups, especially as this issue gains more prominence statewide. Are fairly organized. Some of them have their own attorneys. And so we just want to make sure to, um, you know, uh, that we're we're abiding by law, but also. Any regulations we can put in place are available to us that we can, we can utilize. Um, and again, if the goal is to try to really just bring our local vendors, the ones that are. Are operating in our city and are are willing to go through the process on what that process is. Bring them into compliance, whether it's through education, incentives, both. Um, one thing that other cities do, again, just as waves of example. Most cities do not require a conditional use permit or anything to be approved by the planning commission. Most cities issue what are called administrative permits or approved by staff. Uh, the vendor permits we issue now are actually administrative permits. Those don't need to go to planning commission. Um, but for stationary and mobile food vendors, they do. And so like cities like Turlock, Clovis, Visalia, Fresno, they all issue administrative permits. They're not, uh, discretionary where they have to go to to planning commission as part of a C U P process. Um, so again, um, from staff's perspective, you know. Our goal has always been, and and it has to align with with council's desire is, but is to try to focus on education and process. And working with our colleagues in code enforcement for the vendors in our community. We want to. Have, yeah, folks want to start. I I know several vendors that started as stationary mobile food vendors that now have, uh, storefront businesses and storefront restaurants. Um, we're about to open Cassidy Gorilla and they started out with the food truck, Braised Foods. Has a storefront. They also have a food truck and they had a food truck permit for a while in Talarri. So it is an opportunity for folks to be entrepreneurial, but to. To follow a clear process. And then by the same token, we also want to focus on, uh, enforcement or. The ones that are not willing to follow the process, that are trying to just skirt the rules. Again, a lot of them tend to come from out of town. They're tied to larger operations. And so making sure we are, we have tools at our disposal. Both with what we can do now, but also with some of the things, you know, your council always has an ear to. Legislation that may be coming out of Sacramento, any, any connections you have through League of Cities to really understand, that's what a lot of, um. Code enforcement departments, community development departments are doing up and down the state is have these conversations with their council and letting them know. Here's what it's looking like out there. We have folks that are willing to follow the rules. We're having a lot of issues with these other operators and the new state laws have really limited. What code enforcement and other cities can do in those instances.
What did you mean, uh? Can you clarify when you say tied to other? Organizations or other bigger, um, what?
Yeah, there's speculation that some of these are are operating criminally, uh, tied. I I don't know. I I can only speculate, um, but some of them appear to be, I know there's been instances where where code enforcement staff has talked to folks. And even folks that have come to the counter at city hall and. You know, reluctantly, but they'll admit that they are, they're immigrants that have crossed and they're paying off a debt. And that is, I mean, it's the world we live in. Those things happen and that is, so there's concern from several cities that this is. There are large operations that are utilizing folks to work at the. I mean, we have accounts where people will be dropped off six in the morning in a big van with vending equipment. And, you know, if if code enforcement goes up or city staff rolls up on them, they don't have I D or it's false information. I mean, I I know we have our chief here, he can, I don't know if if his folks have run into these instances as well, but we we've seen where, um. They they said, I'm just dropped off. This isn't my business. I'm just told to to sell here and they're gonna pick me up at the end of the day.
Sort of a form of human trafficking, right?
Yes.
What have you found, Chief?
We we ran into that a little bit. They're very reluctant to be victims of it, um. I I can, I think it's fair to say that since we passed the, uh, the panhandler and got a little bit stricter with that ordinance and the, uh. Relocation of the vendors from the street edge, um, it's it's been reduced a lot, like. A lot. I I wish I could put a number to it, but I can't. But but they're out there and it's seasonal. Uh, maybe that's why I'm not having refresh recollection of it. It's been a while for them. Out panhandling or selling, uh, flowers and their other wares.
Well, I know, uh, last year at this time during Christmas, they were everywhere. And, uh, that was when we moved to try to, um, pass the ordinance and modify it to deal with it and. I don't see that now. Um, of course, if anybody does, then Manny immediately goes to work. So he's done a great job.
I'll figure this out eventually. It's the last slide, thankfully. Um. Uh, so again, uh, in summary, council direction to staff this evening, uh, staff request direction. Uh, on on this issue, but in particular, the following action or alternatives. Is it council's desire to keep the status quo, um, in terms of the existing language and the provisions we have? So again, we have a process and we have language. For both sidewalk vendors and stationary mobile food vendors. It's consistent with state law. We have tools at our disposal. We work with code enforcement. Uh, to, on the enforcement side of things or or things we can continue to to improve upon. Or are there specific revisions to the ordinance, uh, that council wishes to direct staff to undertake, um, or to explore? And again, the the request would just be to let us know what those requests or those revisions specifically would look like. Um, understanding there there should be consensus among you on on which direction we want to go on this issue. But with that, uh, I've been talking a lot. I will, uh, end my presentation. Allow council to deliberate and also be available, obviously, for questions that let me raise. Thank you.
Okay, so I think there, uh, the staff is actually asking for direction from us. So is there, are there any questions or clarifications from any council members?
I think, uh, for for me, in terms of the, uh. You talked briefly about the incentives to, uh, go into compliance. Where, let me kind of lay out an idea and obviously council can can weigh in, but let me lay an idea and just kind of show me where it would fit in. In what we do. So the last time I talked about, we, you know, uh, uh, Councilman Maderos asked, like, how many? In compliance is the word, uh, vendors we have and you say from nine to fifteen, right? I mean. That's, you drive down Enio. From the railroad tracks to west and that's probably nine or fifteen just there. So I know there's a lot more that are out of compliance than in compliance. Correct? In terms of the food trucks. Would that be fair to say?
I I'd have, I'd, I'd have to get some confirmation from Manny where we're at right now, because I could, I could name. For for better or worse, I have most of the permitted ones memorized. So I can go down in you and tell you that there are. Yeah, about five or six, I think that are permitted on Enio alone.
Uh, regarding, uh, mobile. The food vendors, we counted with code enforcement around thirty five people that has been removed for the past three years without permits. Uh, some of them been going into city hall, getting the proper permits, but we count about thirty five in total of trucks and. Um, I know last time we were talking about how do we make sure they don't come back? After the second administrative citation, they don't come back. We never had to go beyond that.
Right. So what I'm trying to get at, I think the last time we had the study session, I brought up the fact, is there a way to incentivize folks say, look, uh. Uh, if you sign up now. You know, for new, for new folks, and I don't know how this would work. You pay whatever I think, I I know the lady on west, um, and, uh, Talarri. She pays at least, from what I remember, she tells me it's about two thousand a year to renew her, her, uh, permit there. The one that's at the restorative gas station.
It's every two years. So that's one, one thing we did, council, um. Is that when the fee went up, uh, it went up by quite a bit when we increased our fees. And we were pa- they were paying that fee every year. So now it's spread out over two years. Every year they still have to provide proof of insurance and health permits and such, but now it's, uh, it's about twenty seven hundred over two years.
Okay, because that was gonna be my question is if there's a way to say, okay, if you're not in compliance, if you get into compliance and. You know, your permit's valid for two years, but it's already two years, right? Because I wasn't aware. I know. I don't know how long ago that changed, but when I talked to her, I knew she'd do it every year. She'd have to go to the planning commission every year.
Yes, it only changed in the last couple of years and and part of that was to encourage, you know, because we have a lot of vendors that. The majority of our vendors are permitted, have been operating for a number of years and continue to renew their permits. The majority of our vendors are permitted, have been operating for a number of years and continue to renew their permits. So we wanted to. Encourage them to continue that process and really try to um. Do what we can with, it seems like, and forgive me if I'm wrong Manny, but what seems to happen and and to Manny's point. They'll issue two administrative citations and they don't come back, but the issue we have is we have vendors that are constant, new vendors. They're constantly showing up and we're right along ninety-nine. So, um, you know, we get vendors that come from. They were in Bakersfield before. They come from LA, they come from Bay Area and so. Um, that tends to be one of the issues is it's the the folks that are operating here normally are are less deterred by the cost. Um, it's, it's the new vendors. Struggle is whether they're gonna stick around and even vendors that, you know, they may be located in Hanford. And they're like, well, I want to have one in Tulare, I want to have one in Hanford and one in Visalia. And but that's gonna be a different permit for each location, right? So sometimes they weigh that against. It all depends on the vendor. If it's a vendor with one location, usually we're able to work with them. Um, and some of them it has. That has been a reason for them not to obtain a permit, but the majority have gone through the process and obtained a permit.
So I think in terms of what whatever incentives you guys think of, I mean, I think that'd be something that I. Would be supportive of is trying to figure out how to incentivize them. I mean, the last time I also asked, is there a way? For the city to provide some kind of signage that they can put on their truck and says, hey, I'm in compliance. And uh, like I like this, like today drove down uh, uh, west and uh, and Enio, there's those phone guys. That are there on the corner. They're constant. They're always there. I don't know if they are, aren't in compliance. I'm assuming they are, but it'd be great if they were to hang something on their little tent that says, I'm in compliance so that. The public or folks could say, hey, okay, great. Thanks for for doing what you're doing on that. So I think that would be one thing. And then the last thing on this topic, um. What ideas could there be for the property owners? Cause you know, I'll go back to that example right there, the West Tulare Gas Station, that one lady. She pays her fees every year. She's out there hustling. She's not there on Tuesdays. I know that because of my experience. After council, I try to go get some tacos and she's not there on Tuesdays, but what about the property owners that allow others? To set up on the same spot, cause I mean, I can't imagine if I owned a little food truck. I'm just gonna go, you know, uh, just, you know, jungle type of thing and set up at a gas station and. They're not gonna know I'm there if I'm there for days and days and days uh, at a time. So what can we do to those? Property owners that, hey, we know, you know, these people are, they're right outside your window and they're selling food too. Is there anything we can do in in that sense?
Yeah, and we, um, I'll talk about kind of on the regulatory side with the permitting and let Manny weigh in on the enforcement side. But we've been trying to to collaborate to do so two things. As I mentioned earlier, we made, since it, since the vendor, the applicant has to, has to provide written proof of property owner permission. We asked for a letter you provided from the property owner. It says, I give permission and they have to name exactly which vendor. But they're the only vendor that are permitting and we allow them to have, they could have a vendor stand and a vendor. Uh, food truck, a a stationary mobile food vendor on the same location, max. So one of each, but they can't have two of each one or more. So we make sure they spell that out, that they they sign and are giving that permission. And we hold them to that. If they were the ones that signed off on this permit. They can't come in and arbitrarily just switch someone out unless that vendor leaves again. On their own accord and says, no, you know what? And we'll always check with the vendors because the property owner will say, oh yeah, they just left. And so we'll call the vendors and find out what really happened. Are they really going to a different location? They don't want to operate there? Or were they, was their rent hiked up? And then on the enforcement side, so just the way we can issue citations to the vendors. We talked about maybe issuing citations to the property owners uh, that are. Doing that specifically, whereas they're trying to just essentially go to the highest bidder and rotate vendors.
But does the ordinance as is written now allow for that?
So we refer to the um, municipal code section that deals with citations. The specific, the the ordinance I'm presenting this evening in chapter ten doesn't go into specifics of citations. It defers everything to what we have on the books to be able to issue citations for code enforcement issues. But I like, I'm many, uh, address that as.
We will, we will have to make a a change in the municipal code allowing us to do that and. A clear example is what happened, Chief, you know that about the growing marijuana houses that before the owner used to say. I didn't know what was going on in my house. I'm not responsible, but now the state goes after the owner too. So there's no excuse because you're responsible for your property. So it's the same situation that we got that idea from. That we might use the same language when we do the amendment to the municipal code.
From my standpoint, uh, very good presentation, Mario. And as I said earlier, you're doing a great job, Manny. Um, I feel like. What your department is doing and the conditional use permit process. Along with the enforcement team that we have, I'm inclined to stay with number one. Let's keep the status quo that's working. And not try to tinker, tinker with it and end up with. What I call unintended consequences on what we're dealing with. The numbers can be concerning, but they're not overwhelming. And as long as we're staying within state law and we're following the ordinance that we have, the code that we have for the city of Tulare. Then uh, it doesn't seem to be broken, so I don't, I I don't feel that we necessarily need to fix. My thoughts.
Councilman Harold, do you have any comments?
I agree with Mr. Maderos. I'd also like to add that, uh, I think the last time Manny, you said that. Most of the outer towners just pay their citations. When they, when they're issued citations, they just pay them.
Yeah, with the mobile vendors is easy because there's a license plate attached to the. To the person because we run it to through PD. Uh, we get driver license, so we can issue and we know they're gonna pay it because that fixes the the driver license. The ones we have issues with is with the small ones like the flower vendors and and fruit vendors. They never have IDs. It's something they tell them, nobody carries IDs. But they do go and pay because we see them on Monday going and setting up payment arrangements with finance and everything. And we tell them that if you really want to get a permit and all the stuff, clear the citations first. So they actually go and pay them.
So what I heard you say was essentially that they pay the first citation, then they come back and set up operation again. They get the second citation. Then they usually don't come back after. Okay, yes, cause I, my thought was that maybe we should increase the fines like we do with fireworks.
That was the situation over there in west. Do you remember that it was a full restaurant? He took three citations and PD, great help from PD uh, showing up. That was the only way to. Take care of that vendor.
I would think number one, it's important that we support our local folks and their their businesses. And maybe consider upping the fines, just in case we do get one or two occasionally that decides it. They're gonna keep coming back no matter what. Do these fines, will they eventually go to warrant if they're not paid?
Not for the sidewalk vendors. Uh, again, they're limited to administrative citations. Uh, I think with the stationary and mobile food vendors, you can escalate it up through the uh, process through the legal.
Well, I think those are the ones that we were having the issue with is the mobile food, not this, not the stationary. That's why I was wondering if they eventually would go to a warrant.
Well, usually it's a the notice of violation, then through administrative citations, then we go start notice to appear. And we set them to appear in court. So after that, if I'm not mistaken, Chief, if they don't appear in court, there's a warrant for arrest.
Yeah, there could be a warrant, but it was mostly routed through the city's attorney's office. I think it's a collection route rather than a criminal warrant.
But if I could interject before the Vice Mayor goes, uh. Mr. Sagala raised the issue about displaying the permit. It is a conditional use permit. I know uh, my office has a business license that we have to uh, display. Is that the case with these? And and shouldn't it be, I guess?
Yes, we've talked about um, uh, with Manny's team about creating um, like a decal, for example. So just the way they have to, they have to have a city business license, just like any other business in the city. So they should definitely have that in their, in their stationary mobile food vehicle or in the vendor stand. But we talked about creating a decal. One thing that worked out, I thought, I thought really well this year. Um, working with Manny's team, working with John Harmon Downtown Association for the, for the food, uh, for the fair, I'm sorry, the Christmas parade. Um, we met with them, obtained a list of vendors that they were going to have at their locations. And they all came through, made sure they had uh, city business licenses and health permits if there's own food. And downtown association created just a little decal that kind of showed, which allowed code enforcement to see if the decal was present. Or not as they're kind of rolling up. And so we can do something similar for our city-approved. Uh, stationary and mobile food vendors and vendor permits.
Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
I think the only thing that that perhaps I I missed or didn't hear clearly was, for example, and number one. To the Tulare Municipal Code ten one eight oh. Is there gaps specifically that staff are presenting that need to be addressed between the fine process? I mean, is, so keeping the status quo, we go through the administrative permit for sidewalk vendors, I guess, is there. Is there any gaps or what you see language that doesn't speak to each other of recommendations of what council should provide direction on?
The only thing I can think of is tightening up maybe language. So essentially what we already do, but codifying, codifying it in this specific section of the code. In terms of uh, the responsibility of property owners that like we talked about earlier, um, that's something that is not there. Um. Other than that, most of what I shared, we have in our code as exists. And so I don't see any. Inherent gap in in the code as it's written.
Okay, and then the second part, which I know kind of goes back to our meetings or or coming forth here. And I'm not sure if it's in TMC ten one point oh. Was the question on the mobile food vendors, which was before the council before of moving from. Believe in our, our current system that we have is from five hundred feet to something less than five hundred feet. So I, I still, or maybe if if staff's component of of us. Is that an element that is still part of this discussion or wanting direction that we're gonna come back on because? Um, if I understood, that was the question initially in front of us, but I, I haven't seen an assessment. Necessarily other than open space of what the, what are those significant differences of? Code between five hundred feet or anything less. I saw the map on the open space, but if I missed it in your presentation, let me know. But that was one element and if staff has anything add to add to that section.
Yes, no, thank you for that. To clarify from staff's perspective on that respective issue. There are, there are more places in the city with the current code that vendors can locate at legally without changing the five hundred to three hundred feet. If that were eliminated or reduced, um, it would just simply open up more of those locations um, to to have a permitted. Again, remember the sidewalk vendors are already fairly permitted throughout the city. We can't put in a lot of those restrictions. So really what it affect is the stationary mobile food vendors. It would open up more locations for those. Um, I don't know that we've. We, again, a lot of this is in a wave, so we'll get a, there'll be time periods. Where someone will receive a citation. They want to locate in the location. They'll come talk to planning. But then because of those restrictions as well as other things we have in the code, they're not able to locate where they wanted to to set up. And so that does occur now. That is something that if we were to revise that, it would open up more places for vendors to locate. So from staff, staff perspective, it would create more opportunity, but by, at the same time. We're not seeing a a large demand, I would say, or we don't have a lot of vendors that are waiting in the wings because they can't be permitted. They just might not be able to be permitted where they want to go.
Okay, so the, a little bit of the cause and effect is that, and I think what what I bring that up was merit to the issue. And I, and I look towards so some, I look for any advisement, Councilman Harold, because I know you were involved in that process in the past and I asked was. I think initially what started the five hundred feet was health, safety. There was the business concerns. I mean, there was elements that involved the police department, many codes and departments, and that was set up at that time. There was many meetings to meet specific issues and to mitigate the issues in the community, if that's a fair summary. So today, and when I say today, but current time is when a request came up. And I think that from your report, there's merit to note that it was a single request came up. And I think the changing from three to five hundred was, is there any dynamics today that are different? Health, safety, can you, you know, mitigating those issues as we said before. Well, what I understood in the report is perhaps those issues aren't as prevalent today as they were back at that time period. However, what I'm hearing from your report, which is, we aren't getting requests. That are about mitigating five hundred feet to four hundred or three hundred. Usually you get requests that are just same spot competition. If if you were to change it, if were to change it to three hundred, it just opens more spots, but that's not. If if I'm understanding your report, that's not really a current issue. There isn't a, there isn't merit behind any significant change of going five hundred, four fifty, three, three hundred, if you will, other than it would just open more spots.
That, that's a correct assessment and it really is what, what is council's desire? Does council feel that? The number we have now, which is roughly about fourteen or fifteen vendors is. Is a fair amount. Do you know, do we have too many and we need to be more restrictive or do we? Do we think there's not enough and we need to create more opportunities? Do you make it easier for them to locate specifically the stationary and mobile food vendors? Um, then then that would be, I guess, the argument to make for uh, reducing that requirement.
O- outside of the one specific uh, vendor who brought this issue to light. That I would agree with his statement, but there is the one that is concerned and wouldn't be able to go back unless we amend the ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm just taking a collection of what I I observed as a council member from peers of the council was one looking. I think one is their merit. What would be any unintended consequences? What's any change between the the spirit and context of why it was established? And I think looking at that is, um, it's something that I'm, I'm open to. But I also appreciate staff presentation that's up to our peers. Is there a driver behind that? I mean, is there really any element that has changed, I think, that component? So, um, that's. Something open-minded to, but um, I, I'm not hearing that is really a focus between the research and everything that's been presented. And if it seems council would, I'm speaking for the group, but for me, it would keep an open mind. That if the dynamics in the community were to change on mobile food vending or some. Some element towards that spirit and context of that rule were to shift. It seems at that time, the council could come back and address it, but there's not something really in front of us in all of what I just said to address that.
And if I could clarify, even in that one situation, based on uh, uh, the information I received. And I think Mr. Harold had confirmation of that. The belief by us was. Based on what you indicated, Mario, that that location was going to be east of the liquor store. And yet, when I talked to the property owner, he said, no, no, that's not where he wanted it. He wanted it west near the road. And you had indicated that wasn't permissible even with the change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If I can just add another, one other comment, uh, so you just described one side of the equation. To go from five hundred to three hundred. The only other comment I would share is, while I wasn't here and I'm not sure, I know Mr. Harold was here and. I'm sure there's other staff that were. I'm not sure if Mario was involved in that discussion. I'm not sure all of the effort that went into establishing five hundred as the magic number either. My understanding was the five hundred was the result of a specific, a specific instance, just like the request that's before you. That generated all this discussion was a specific instance. My understanding was the five hundred was a response to a specific instance and I think five hundred felt about right. Should it have been four hundred and seventy-eight feet or five hundred and thirty-six feet? I I don't know that answer. I think when we do these kinds of things, typically, we look at the circumstances and we try to look at, you know, either we find. An existing standard, it exists somewhere else that we can apply, you know, from another jurisdiction or the state or best practices or, you know, some association. Or we look at the circumstances and say, what makes sense? This five hundred makes sense for this reason or the other. Uh, so on and so forth. And so I just want to say, I don't, I'm not saying you're saying that, but I don't want to put um. More credit into the five hundred feet as if that's some magical number. It's just the number that we came up with at the time. It seemed to meet the needs at the time. It seems to still be working. I'm not sure that we need to stick with five hundred unless that's council's desire.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that, but but I think my peers, I think the group was looking of. Is there some alternative that would drive that? Is there a drive behind it? And I, I don't know that I've heard that information or if. And I, I don't know that I've heard that information or if the group is in consensus on.
Any other comments? Manny, anything else? Okay, so as far as direction, Mario, I've heard three things. Uh, one is that we, some kind of a display of compliance. That can be on the, on the mobile vendors as well as the permanent, uh, food trucks. Uh, some kind of, um, let's see, what was the other thing? Language concerning property owners' responsibility? That that be tightened up and more clear? And perhaps I'm in agreement that there's some, uh, looking at the five hundred and three hundred feet, uh, in the ordinance, if, if that, if that's something that would clarify, um, the process that we understand why we have that and what was the circumstances and what are they different now?
Thank you, Mayor. That actually is really, uh, good, clear direction from staff's perspective. It also coincides with something your council will be seeing in two thousand and twenty-four is, um, as you're aware, we're revising all the entirety of chapter ten, which is zoning code, including ten point one eighty, which is the vetting ordinance. So we'll look to bring those, so for example, the, the change in the language for the property owner. But also it allows us in working with our consultant, as we're revising sections of the code, we're seeing, you know, what's done in other cities. Is there a best practice in terms of distance requirements and stuff? So we can do it as part of that process and, and it'll come before council as well to weigh in on, uh.
Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, the study session has, uh, accomplished the direction necessary?
Madam Mayor. I'm a little bit still confused on this five hundred and three hundred feet. I thought that really was not part of this now. To, to clarify that even further in words, I thought if we went with, uh, keep the status quo, it was going to be five hundred feet. And then.
Well, that's the second bullet there is the existing ordinance, which is different than the T M C ten one eighty.
Well, there was at least two of us that felt like what's working should be left that way. I don't know if there's three that want to, uh, to reconsider the distance. So that's the question. Is that fair, Mr. Harold?
Yes. And, and I guess just for my clarification, is that something I just suggested that something that could be revised as part of the update to chapter ten and be brought back to council? Or is that something you'd want to see separately?
I, I think, Madam Mayor, I think that, um, on, on the issue of the five, or narrowing the, the feet apart, I think once and for all, I think tonight we should decide that. We should say if there's three votes, uh, to have that modification looked at, then that's the will of the council. There isn't the three votes. And there is three votes to stay status quo, then that's where we stay. Because this is like the third or fourth time we're, you know, bringing this up. So, I mean, I don't know how much more we can clarify it than it's two hundred feet shorter. So I think, and then, you know, I think Mr. Maderos has brought up potential ramifications. I think that one map that, uh, you put up there with all the green kind of gave us an idea. If we were to go to the three hundred, those areas would be more impacted than not. So I would recommend that as part of tonight, at least on the five hundred to three hundred, we just either say yes or no. I'm willing to support the reduction. And so I'm one vote. And so, um, that, that is my recommendation.
I, I, I mean, this came before a vote asked to send it back, came back. But where, where, where I bring it up, and I think there's, and to support with Mr. Harold's comment though, and, and to the mayor is there's not an action in front of us or there's really a merit or a dynamic of change. And I think what I observed from the city manager was, it could be if you want to change your permissions, but we don't, the issue that didn't come before us was a pressing need that said the merit is we need to change this so more people are, I'm getting left out because of space or because of that issue. And I understood sticking, I think, to the merit, you know, I don't want to use that word too much. But I think what was presented in front of us wasn't so much of a specific request for a specific person, for a specific circumstance. We shouldn't look at things that way. Rather was, is there, is there something broader in this policy? And I think for the time being, we haven't heard that. But that we could address that or we could bring that up. I think if there were mobile food vendors that were saying, we're getting left out or we're getting left behind, or you need to open this up, we didn't hear that argument from anybody. And I think what we're hearing from staff is we're not hearing that argument. If, if something to the merit of the issue were to change, we come back to it. But so I'm, I'm a little bit of, no, I think we're done with it. We don't spin in circles a little bit more. But if the circumstances change in the business out in the field or out in the aggregate of the community, we can always come back. And I think now we know where to come back and we know what to do. We know where to go to address that at that point in time. That, that's my current feeling.
Which is.
Okay, so there.
Which is no.
No, yeah. Okay, so I believe that, uh, what you're saying is that we can come back to that if there's a predominance of, um, vendors that, you know, ask for that or request that in order for them to be entrepreneurial and to have their business. Is that what I heard?
Yes, uh, that's clear to, to staff.
Yeah, then, then I would, given that, I just make the motion that the display and the language on the property owner accountability be the direction that we, as a council. Yeah, yeah, the first two without the five hundred, three hundred. So that, that would be, if we need a motion, I would do that.
No, we've got consensus.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then, um, I believe that, uh, ends the study session. We're fifteen minutes after seven, but we'll take a five minute break for us. And then we'll come back and start, uh, the regular council session. Where's Jose? We'll now call, uh, order to the Tulare City Council meeting at seven twenty-five. Uh, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jose Sagala and, uh, invocation by Susan Hennard.
You guys, I'm joining in our black suit. Where do we begin?
I pledge allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. I thank you for the rain that our valley. I thank you for the rain that our valley and our state so desperately needs. And Father, I thank you for this council who you have given to our city to lead, guide, and shepherd. I thank you for the job that they do and for the hard work that they put into leading. And Father, I just ask that you continue to have your hand upon our city, the city that we love, the city that we live in, the city where we raise our children and where we do our business. Father, may our city continue to grow and flourish, especially as so many new, exciting businesses are beginning to open. It is such a joy to be a part of the city of Tulare during this season. So Father, I thank you for every good thing that's happening. Father, and we wanted to just, I want to bring to you our sweet Janice Avila, Father. Is this, is her last city council meeting tonight? I pray your hand be upon her life and that of her husband and her family, God, that you will guide her and be with her in this retirement, Lord, and that you will bless her abundantly in this whole new season and chapter of her life. I thank you, God, for the year she has given to our city of Tulare. She will be missed, Lord, but I know that you will be with her every step of the way as she leaves. So Father, again, just bless this time tonight, bless this meeting, bless our council and our department heads, and bless every family and household that is represented here tonight, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. This evening, we have some really exciting certificates of recognition to present. And first of all, I'd like to call up Nick Galvin, the Live Oak Middle School Band Director. I can tell he's really excited about coming up here. Turn around, Fesher. Okay. Yeah, there you go. So on behalf of the citizens of Tulare, we are pleased to present the certificate to recognize Nick Galvin, the Live Oak Middle School Band Director, for being selected as one of 400 band directors from across the country to perform with the Band Directors Marching Band at the 2023 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. As a part of the Saluting America's Band Directors Project, thank you for representing Tulare well and for your dedication to teaching music and teaching life to our youth as a 10-year Yellow Jacket Tulare Band Booster. I, I am so appreciative of Tulare's legacy for band directors and for the quality of bands that we have produced in this city and for the lives that have been positively impacted because they participated in music, especially band. And so my saxophone-playing daughters still play their saxophones occasionally, and it was just a wonderful experience to be able to be associated with Cherry Avenue Band and then Tulare Union Band. So I appreciate you so much, just because of my own personal experience of what a band director does for the lives of kids. So we want to present this to the 19th day of December, and it's signed by all of the city council. So congratulations. Anybody want to take pictures of that? Okay, we also this evening are going to do the Annual Employee Spotlight Award Recipients. The city adopted the Employee Spotlight Program, which is designed to shine a light on the city's most valuable assets, its employees. Employees that demonstrate a superior level of commitment, partnership, accountability, positive attitude, and high customer service are nominated throughout the year by their peers. A selection committee reviews the nominations and selects employees to be spotlighted. The spotlight is shared on the city's social media sites, so the community has an opportunity to see the faces of those that provide their services. In addition to reviewing and selecting nominations for spotlighting employees throughout the year, the selection committee also picks two employees, one safety and one non-safety, to receive the Annual Employee Spotlight Award. This is not an easy task, as the city has many employees who go above and beyond on a daily basis. The two employees selected this year were announced at our employee luncheon last week, and were invited to be recognized here tonight on council. So please help me congratulate Ken Wells from our IT department and Jacob Gwynn. Is that right, how I said it right, from the fire department? So gentlemen, please come up. Jacob must be working. We'll be sure he gets that. So I want to read a bit of his nomination, just to give you an idea of how respected he is among his peers. Mr. Wells has been absolutely invaluable in keeping the fire department ITU smooth and operating at peak efficiency. In two separate instances, Ken helped me with a complicated issue that was technically the responsibility of another organization, but in the interest of getting city operations back up and running, chose to invest his time and expertise into getting the problem solved out. His choice not to take the easy answer of this is their problem, not ours, and instead work through the problem shows a great deal of commitment to the success of the organization. He has also assisted me personally with a variety of mundane issues during his tenure with the city, going so far one time as to walk me through how to fix the issue myself, which led to an even more product, even more productivity as I taught others the same process. In addition to all of that, Ken is always pleasant and patient while still being very direct and to the point when it comes with getting the problem solved. He makes every effort to solve issues remotely, but has never hesitated to venture out to stations to fix problems that need his personal touch. Thank you, Ken, and that is from his nomination. And I just, I want to thank him personally, because we have to change our passwords periodically. I'm not technologically savvy. I grew up in the time of a click, click, click typewriter. And he is so patient with me and helping me do that. So I, I know this is true, how patient he is, and I respect him so much. So congratulations. Thank you. We'll be sure that fire engineer gets it. That's the fun part. Okay, we will now go to, I believe, public comments will be next. So this is a time for, oh, this is a time for the public to comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Tulare City Council that are not on the agenda. The council asks that comments are kept brief and positive. The council cannot legally discuss or take official action on request items that are introduced tonight. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar repulsed for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing or general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, each speaker will be allowed three minutes with a maximum time of 15 minutes per item unless otherwise extended by the council. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call 559-366-1849 during public comments and/or public hearing and general business items. Please note that there will be approximately a 20-second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in mutual device used for viewing the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. I have two yellow cards. John Harmon?
I was hoping you were going to say that, Madam Mayor, John Harmon, Tulare Downtown Association. I would just like to say, I'm here tonight to say one thing. Thank you. Thank you to the city of Tulare for helping us have what Pete Vanderpoel, our supervisor, said was the best Christmas parade Tulare's ever had. So we had a, we had an, just an excellent time, and we owe a lot to the departments of the city for helping us have a successful parade. So thank you. Thank you for your support and participation. The, I like to share this. I don't want you to think I'm bragging, but I am. We have a neighboring community, a member of that said, oh, we had our Christmas parade here, and we had 101 entries. But just so you know, when we started the Tulare Christmas Parade, when we started working on it about 10 years ago, we were lucky to get 45 to 50 entries. This last Christmas Parade here, the first of the month, we had 114 entries. So we beat our neighboring community. And additionally, I was told that they had 20,000 people in attendance. Well, I'm proud to say that we made an estimate of our attendance as well, and we had 25,000 people attend our parade. That's our, that's our estimate this year. So we beat them in those two categories, and I'm very proud to be able to say that. As I was listening to your conversation earlier in the study session, one of the issues that we did run into was some enforcement issues. Mario alluded to the fact that we have stickers. We also use magnets for vendors who have a screen around them. So that might be something that you consider when you talk about the signage that's going to go on the, on these vendors. And the other thing that we ran into is, I think, part of the licensing issue might, might be resolved if a producer of any event were included in that licensing process. One of the things that we ran into is, a lot of these vendors, they have a business. They go in, we literally had a business called Jose's Business. He went in, he purchased a business license, and apparently he had a high-speed copier. And we had tons of vendors that were running around with Jose's Business business license, but they were all copies of that business license. So the only thing I would suggest is, if you run, if, if, when we, when a producer's doing an event and somebody shows up at City Hall wanting a license, if you, if there's a process to route those people to the producer of that event and have them coordinate there, that might help with the enforcement later on down the road. That being said, PD, thank you so much for all the help that you gave us. It was great. Mario working with us on the vendors. Appreciate that. Tracy, everybody who helped out on the parade, we really appreciate everything you did for us. Streets Department just cannot say enough good about what Tulare did this year as far as the Christmas parade goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Harrell? Sure, sure. Remind me, in case I forget. Are there any other people in council that want to make public comments? If not, then I'll ask if there are any communication, oh, anybody on the phone? Any communications?
No communications.
All right, council reports. Councilman Harrell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 14th, attended the employee, I guess it was Christmas in Hawaii luncheon, which I must say, it was an outstanding event. Probably the one that came most dressed appropriately would have been the city manager at the event. Nice turnout of employees, great food. Like I said, it was just, it was an outstanding event, and I was certainly honored to be there. My other activity was dealt with a couple of constituent issues, which Manny's handled both of them for me. I've also been working with Reverend Sanders at the New Mount Holy Baptist Church. They had a fire about a week and a half ago on Sunday morning. I've talked to him several times and been working with him, Southern California Edison and their insurance carrier, to try to get them up and get their sanctuary back open again before Christmas. It's an ongoing process, but even John has got involved in it a little bit to help out, see if we can get this going.
Councilman Segala, welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody for their well wishes back after unexpected surgery. But I also wanted to, to, I haven't had a chance to be out and about as much, but I did get a chance to go to the employee holiday lunch, which I look forward to every year. It's an opportunity for all of our city employees to join us together in a great environment, great food. But at least for me, and I know for the rest of the council, it gives an opportunity for us to go and talk to many of them that we don't get to see throughout the year, but to thank them for their, for their public service and all the great things that they do to keep our city running and moving forward. And so I was very excited to, to join with them and the council members that were there in thanking everyone. I also, I also wanted to just take a moment to thank Janice for her leadership and for her friendship and for the number of things that, well, now, actually, today? This council meeting, I think it'll be my seven years that I've been on the council and wanted to, to thank her for, for all the things that she's done and look forward to working with our new HR manager director as well. And so thank you, Janice, for, I hope you get to enjoy retirement. I thank you for, you know, I have three grandbabies now, and you know, you have set the example, you know, how you need to, to take, spend time with them and cherish them. I always see your social media posts with them, and it's, it's a good mentor, mentorship there that you have. So thank you very much, Janice. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Maderos? I also attended the city luncheon and tried to go festive, as others have. Went to the Chamber Mixer last Thursday, and I want to echo what Mr. Segala said about Janice. I've known Janice for a long time before I became a city councilperson. In fact, when I first decided to run, she chided me and tried to encourage me and, and lo and behold, see what you got, so. So enjoy yourself on your second retirement. You can make it three if you want to, you know, at any time. And you and Jimmy, I'm sure, enjoy the time that you'll have together, so. Congratulations.
Vice Mayor?
Good evening. I think, as was noted, welcome back, Councilman Segala. Good to have you here with us. And of course, as has been stated, thank you, Janice, for your service to the city of Tulare. Look forward to seeing you on Friday and of course, your happy trails, adventures that you have coming. Like, like Councilman Maderos had said, attended the Chamber Annual Event. And, and I really, it was really exciting to be at the Chamber event, because it really had just such an energy, a lot of new business, business owners that attended that function, and it was just really a great energy. And it really, I think, spoke to the, just the vibrancy that we're seeing amongst business owners in our community. It was a great time, and I know Councilman Maderos and I were there. I was lucky to win something.
I was going to say, tell the real reason you're excited.
He won. He won a thing.
Anyway, I got this fancy mug and a pair of socks and a gift certificate. I think I might have to report this in my 700 for anybody who's watching, so, good stuff. And then as well, and I think for, you know, folks that of course, listening, is traffic, traffic, and traffic. Working through the light at Bardsley and Mooney, and I do appreciate staff and the contract that got out there and fixed the light. I think it was Wednesday of last week, finally. And I know it's a very difficult issue, but the, the traffic on Bardsley Avenue is just become something else. It happens at different times, doesn't have to be peak times. And I know we build roads not to address extremes. We build roads for traffic. But working through Sunday for last, and I got 47 calls in one morning because of, well, the Sunday, because of the event that took place over there. So I'm just, I, I, I know it's on our, it's on our agenda. I know it's in our strategic plan, and I know there are improvements for the Bardsley, Mooney, Oakmore corridor, Morrison over there, but I look forward to the future when all the road improvements are there, because to constituents, I hear you. We have plans in the works, and I'll be glad when that corridor has its improvements down the road. And staff, when I, when I call in, if I'm shoving because I'm being pushed, I do appreciate everybody at the city that does respond and helps out.
And I have to echo that. I've gotten more calls about Morrison and 137 and Bardsley and Morrison as well, so. And I do appreciate Michael Miller. He just got right on it. I don't know how many pictures I send him in. And, and they were able to at least alleviate some of the problem. It's what, it's the traffic from St. Rita's. Now that we have that gigantic St. Rita's church on Sunday, getting, getting out of the church and back home, it's going to be really something. I was able to, not able to go to the holiday lunch because I had to work that day. It's gonna need to be really something. Uh, I was able to, not able to go to the holiday lunch because I had to work that day. Uh, which I was sorry to miss that. Uh, but I did go to two ribbon cuttings, which just again, um, highlights. What's happening downtown. The drive box, I didn't practice golf at Pebble Beach, but I know uh, some people did. It's a. Really fun place to, to go and they, they had a wonderful ribbon cutting with music and tacos and it was really fun. And the Elevate Barber Lounge also had a ribbon cutting, which is right across from Zumwalt Park. They had a really nice uh, ribbon cutting there as well. Went to the Chamber Mixer. Also this week, uh, in conjunction with the Rotary and Kiwanis, we do like each other. Uh, Rotary honored the uh, young uh, student. The young girl student of the year for the Chamber and Kiwanis honored the young male student for the year with thousand dollar scholarships for each of them. So that was a really fun thing to do as well. And last night, we had our Civic Academy. The police chief was there to address. Any issues and to speak with the, the crowd that attended. And uh, I really appreciate all of the directors uh, who have attended those Civic Academies and shared um, what they do with them, so. It was a busy week. I was at TCAG and there um, brought up again, one thirty seven and Morrison. And that is beginning to uh, to, to go to, to bid. And soon we should see some alleviation of the traffic at that particular site as well. So lots of things going on. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine. Excuse me. Why do I always skip that? Oh, well, I, I think it's happened twice now. Anyway, January second, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting is canceled. So don't come that night. We have about a hundred percent more people than we usually come, but, but Janice needs to come that night. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. So all items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted upon by a separate motion. So do I have uh, anything that, anyone that wants to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that item ten point five and ten point six.
Ten point five?
And ten point six.
Ten point six. Anything else? Yes?
I'll make a motion to adopt items ten point one through ten point ten. Excluding ten point five and ten point six uh, be passed.
Do I have a second? Okay, it's been uh, moved and seconded. And all those in favor? Any opposed? Passes five to one. So we'll pull uh, ten point five first.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I can do ten point six first and then.
Oh, okay. Sure.
After that. Um, thank you very much. Uh, this particular item is tentative parcel map request for deferred. Deferred Improvement Agreement on uh, Fulton Estates or development that is being proposed off of uh. Highway one thirty seven in Oakmore, uh, as described in the staff report. And uh, I think I. Had, I did talk to our city manager and our city engineer about this item and, and shared with them my intent to remove it and ask some questions. About this and um, I guess what, what um, what I'm interested in, in getting a better understanding is the impact. That this particular deferral may have on the overall uh, development. I, I know it's a phased development and this particular uh, parcel, parcel number three. Is a frontage on the highway one thirty seven or Tulare Avenue, correct?
Uh, city manager, city engineer, Michael Miller. Um, yes, that is correct.
And I think for, for me is um, just given the uh, and the other question I had for you, Michael, is that. From reading the staff report and the city engineer's report, um, and then obviously there's some, there's something that is described in the staff report. These would, improvements would include, include curb gutter, uh, maybe would sidewalk also be part of that?
Yes, it's all frontage improvements. So curb, gutter, sidewalk, pave out and potentially streetlights.
And then would there be any underground utilities that are going to be required?
That is correct. There's existing overhead uh, utilities along the south side of Tulare Avenue across this parcel's frontage, so. Uh, there could also be overhead utility, undergrounding, relocation.
There could be or there will be, because I, I mean, I, I looked at the, I drove by there and I saw that there are. So that there had to be some underground?
Uh, it, it's almost certain that there would be, um, without knowing exactly where the poles fall, um. I, I can't specifically answer, but it stands to reason that there most likely would be the required undergrounding.
And, and so Mayor Council, this came to my attention just given the historical uh. Situation that's occurred with a potential developer here in regards to another project where the city is going to have to. Be responsible for underground utilities and so forth. So my, my concern has been the accountability. My understanding is that the deferment would be made by the owner, uh, the owner of the property. But yet this property from the last council meeting, uh, and my understanding is will be sold to a developer for building out. Is that?
That is correct. Uh, this particular requirement for the Deferred Improvement Agreement is specific to the parcel map. It, it, we do know that there are plans that the resulting parcels will be part of the Fulton Estates subdivision map. Um, but at this point, the, the requirement for the Deferred Improvement Agreement is specific just to the parcel map itself. And so it's the uh, the particular existing property owner is not the future developer.
And then from what I understand, this is similar to the last council meeting where uh, the council needed. To pass that particular staff recommendation or the project wouldn't move forward or there was some timing issues. So this is similar to that, obviously, two weeks later, but if, if the council were to make any changes or delay. This could potentially disrupt the developer's timeline or sale of the property or something like that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, the property owner does have a potential developer that wants to purchase one of the. Parcels for subsequent subdivision phase one of the Fulton Estate subdivision. So the parcel map needs to record by um, the end of the year is my understanding for that sales agreement to work out. So if we can't get the Deferred Improvement Agreement approved, then that of course would hold up the parcel map and put that sale of the property. In jeopardy.
And I, the other question, yeah.
It's scheduled too close by the end of the year, but that always can be extended by agreement of the parties. Is that accurate?
We don't know what the terms of the agreement are before, between the parties and technically we wouldn't get involved in that.
And in regards to what my understanding how this project would move forward is that there is a phase one that is sort of inside the. The, the, the developed area, meaning that phase one has no connection with the frontage of. Highway one thirty seven, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so phase one would allow for, uh, is it like a hundred homes to be built or? Let's see, I think it was ninety, I, I think I might have read ninety something, but a number of homes.
Eighty, eighty-two lots in phase one.
So eighty-two lots could potentially be built out, fully built out, people living there, people driving there, people. Hopefully enjoying, enjoying uh, their first time home or whatever and not one single improvement. Would be required on the frontage.
That is correct.
And so there could be a possibility like anything else, the economy goes down or something. Other bills come due to the developer or funding, financing, that there's no requirement for phase two to even proceed.
That's correct.
And therefore no frontage improvements will not ever be made until that's, that phase two or something else is developed.
That's correct. And that's part of the reason for securing improvements across this one parcel, which. Is considered a developed parcel because it has a house on it. Um, so if for some reason phase two of the subdivision doesn't proceed in the future and those parcels are sold off separately. And homes are built on them, with those parcels and the homes being built on them, we could require the construction of frontage improvements. But with this parcel three, that the Deferred Improvement Agreement is for, we wouldn't be able to without this agreement in place. So that's, we're protecting the ability to, to have those improvements installed in the future through this agreement.
But I thought I read where that house is going to be knocked down.
That is what we've been told, but this agreement secures us in case that doesn't happen.
Sure.
Uh, that's a question too. I, I know we had those issues previously in another situation, not with this uh, uh, this property owner. But do we have adequate security? And with the increase of costs that we're seeing. I, I saw the figures in paragraph three of this agreement and my immediate question was. Are we protected or are we going to be in the kind of situation we were in before? And, and also um. I didn't see anything in here about assignment, you know, if this. And Mario, and you might address that, there's no assignment paragraph in here. And is the original property owner continuing to be obligated under the circumstances? If this is assigned to a developer? And what is the effect of this? Uh, I talked to Mario beforehand about what I envisioned as a flaw. In the resolution that is the base, that the planning commission issued, that's a basis for this agreement itself. You might clarify that, Mario, because Michael's not aware of it.
No, that's not correct. Planning comi-
Hang on a second.
Planning Commission Resolution would be related to the tentative subdivision map. This is related to the parcel map, which would have been approved by parcel map committee resolution. So the two are not linked.
So. The, the resolution, uh, I was talking to Tracy about the resolution. So the resolution is actually uh. Four persons present, one person absent, one person recused for um, essentially a financial reason. The other person abstained um, for no particular financial reason. So the, there continue to be a quorum and then that. Resolution that you're asking about passed two to zero with one abstention.
Even an abstention, it, you're, you're supposed to say why you abstain. That didn't take place?
It, well, not from the minutes, but it doesn't, I mean, ultimately it doesn't matter. The, the, the recusal, it looks like. On the minutes only applied to one, uh, one of the committee members.
And I think just to continue on, on my, my concerns and thoughts are the, the accountability portion of those utilities or frontage. Improvements. Uh, the, the one question I did ask you was, how does that play into the council's uh, uh, action? At the last council meeting where we accepted the right of way in terms of uh, we pretty much did the developer a favor. By asked, by doing what he asked, which was to have the city take over the right of way. Versus them giving it to Caltrans, which there was delays or bureaucracy, whatever the place, the, the, the issue may be. Does that, does this impact any of that? I mean, are we going to get stuck with having to do these? Are we going to get stuck with? Any of those financials? I know there's a bond, but as Mr. Madero said, there was a bond in the last one, so.
So this actually protects us in a way. Um, as we discussed, the city would not own the right of way. Until council accepted it through a separate resolution. Right now, it's just an irrevocable offer of dedication on the parcel map, which was. Declined um, with approval of the parcel map, subject to future acceptance by council. So at that time in the future, when council would accept the right of way dedication. Uh, we would have this agreement in place to enforce the requirement for that existing parcel, whoever the property owner is. To complete the improvements, so it serves to protect us in that regard.
And, and Caltrans is okay with it just floating in the air until we accept it?
That's correct. Right now, they have no need for that right of way. And uh, if, if they were to approach us and say, would they had a project and they had a need for the right of way at that point, that would trigger the city. Accepting the irrevocable offer of dedication and then we would transfer it to the state.
And then it would, I know that we did talk about Morrison and um, one thirty seven, that Ferrari Estates. Development there that, you know, I know that when that came before council, I know and others were uh, we had put. A contingency that no uh, um, which got certificate of occupancy would be issued until the roundabout or. Whatever traffic mitigation was completed and that went out the window. Can, that something can, can something like that be put on this particular development? In regards to like phase two, that no certificate of occupancy could be issued until the frontage or uh, improvements are conducted? Are done?
I would suggest that that's a discussion that council should have when you are actually considering approval of the final map of the Fulton Estate subdivision. This is related to the parcel map. Um, like once again, they're, they're separate. They are related, but they are separate issues.
Right, and I think, and, and just the final, the final thoughts on this, my, my concern is just the, the piecemeal. We do the deferral. And the other parcels move forward with improvements. How is that going to be? We're going to have sort of uh, you know, one, we're going to have part of it improved and. Maybe not this part or vice versa. So that's, that's, that's another big concern that I have with this particular item, so.
Well, once, once again, the agreement does protect us in that case. That's, this, the purpose of the agreement is to ensure that at least for that parcel. If. If the other parcels develop separately and there is the need, the city wants to see these improvements go in at the same time concurrently. We can enforce the terms of this agreement.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask some clarifying questions of our city engineer. Michael, is this the first deferred improvement agreement the city of Tulare has ever dealt with before?
No.
Is deferred improvement agreement something that other cities often deal with to your knowledge as well?
Yes.
Is, to your knowledge, are parcel maps usually preceding final maps and or other portions of the development process?
It's common, yes.
Yes. So I, I just want to make sure council understands. I understand the concern that are being raised and I appreciate making sure that. The city's interests are protected, but I want to also make sure that we're not doing something here that is out of the ordinary, unique. Uh, something that is uh, somehow custom fit. Um, we are doing what some of our standard practices and procedures are, which are important. Because if we want to be able to allow development to go forward, it's important that we have flexibility and move at the rate and speed at which development needs to occur. So I just want to make sure that we are, while we're being mindful of the concerns, we're not losing track of the context. That this falls in, which is the regular development process.
Yeah, but I.
Let me, let me ask.
Argue different.
Let me ask some questions. Um. But Mark, just along that line. The bids we got on the various projects we were doing, some all, and let's say uh, uh, the courthouse. How much more were they than our projection? What's the standard figure that we're looking at?
In those particular projects at this point in time, those were thirty percent, but I think we also recognize, there is no way for us to know in the future what. Costs typically go up, yes.
We've been, and I think at the time, your argument to us, which I fully accept. Was that we're looking at a consistent thirty percent over above, over and above what these items are costing. Isn't that correct?
Yes, for those projects at that time, that is correct.
And yet we've got a, we've got what's being purported to give to us in today's economy. That we're protected because it represents, Michael, one hundred and ten percent, only ten percent. Above what that cost is going to be. And yet we're two, two years down the line, right? Is that correct? And that's when this is going to take, take place, two years down the line and we've only got a ten percent window. Give me your best guess, Mike, as to whether in two years, ten percent will be enough. Just your best guess.
Typically, construction costs are anywhere from four percent to six percent a year, so. I see where you're going with this.
Typically, but what have they been over the course of the last couple of years? Just along the lines of what Mark indicated and what we're seeing.
These last couple of projects, we have experienced close to thirty percent cost.
And, and I understand, but I think we have to reevaluate that in certain circumstances. And, and we don't want to be in a situation to where we're treating anybody any different. I appreciate that. But I'm also concerned about the fact that we have no paragraph in here, Mario, about what happens if this is assigned. Who is it that's responsible? Is the original property owner responsible under the circumstances? Those are just factors we have to consider so that we don't have a situation to where undergrounding of, of utilities doesn't take place. And ultimately, we as a city have to pay for it. That's a legitimate concern with any developer, not any particular developer, any developer.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but I want council- I wouldn't disagree with that, but I want council to be mindful of the decisions that it makes. And so if this evening you're interested in assessing a security at a hundred and thirty percent or whatever that amount is, that's what we're going to be doing across the board with every project. And so keep in mind, all of those decisions that you make impact development. Well, everything we do is about mitigating risk. What level of risk are we willing to accept, right? I, I want to make sure that we're not being overly cautious because of a, of a specific instance that occurred in the past, which now will have a ripple effect on all the development projects that we want to pursue in the future. Because I could tell you a really quick way to put a chilling effect on development in your city, and I'm not saying we're there yet. I'm just cautioning council, because I've lived this before with councils. If you start trying to mitigate all risk, being in the development business as a city, improving zoning, improving parcel maps, you assume some degree and some level of risk. If you're trying to get to a place where you eliminate all risk, then you might as well be willing to eliminate all development because it doesn't exist. So we just have to be mindful, be careful about what we do and make sure that what we apply to this project or that project makes those projects still financially work and we're not isolating one from another.
But you do understand the natural concern.
Of course I do.
I, I don't know if this needs to be said, but I, I also want to be mindful of the temperament that this isn't, uh, us versus them, or staff did something wrong and we're, we're beating it over the head. There was also a couple of comments, and I think for the audience to be here that, that I think speak towards the integrity, towards development, integrity and character, towards this process that was said is, uh, council in our decision-making didn't do favors. Uh, council with policy didn't let things go out the window, that was said. Um, uh, few of you are in the audience, have been here through these meetings throughout the process, and I just want to speak that I, I just want to be mindful to the temperament that we aren't debating character and integrity, staff did something wrong, they didn't take this into consideration, just because the dynamics, the tones and the atmosphere can seem that um, we're trying to correct something that was of, of a wrong. And I really don't want over assumptions towards that council somehow rubber stamped what staff had presented in the past. The, the issue with the certificates of occupancy was found in an E R R process, which council actually voted. So it didn't go out the window. Council members had the documents and council members voted on it. Up, agree, disagreed dynamics, that, that's what took place. The other part that I also just want to make sure that we're on the same page here is this, as written here in the dynamic, is it's to subdivide parcel one into eighty-two lots. And what we had before us in the past and looking at that action, and I looked at city manager, city attorney, parcel one into eighty-two lots is parcel one by splitting that parcel up and parcel one, it is eighty-two lots that could be built, that there would be no improvements anywhere else on that lot. Because parcel one doesn't touch that or the parcel was separated. So it's not that parcel one, two, three, four would be developed with no improvements, but parcel one could be, but the reason, well, I want to stop that, is parcel one is separate from the rest of the conversation. It's really exclusive because it was separated out and the development on parcel one is an exclusive conversation from the rest.
Yes.
So the reason per se, and we come back and we look at this whole project and go, we don't like that. But I also believe in staff, if I'm correct, is when it was asked at the previous meeting, there is no policy on the books to prevent that. A person can take that map, do the site map, do the changes with the parcels. And we may not like the way that the developer split that up, but there is no policy to stop that or prevent it. And really the issue is council needs to come back, and if we want to address that, we need to work on those policies. But that's not because staff did this or the developer tried to swindle us. That actually followed compliance and policies. That true as well.
That's true.
So as we move forward in that, this, to take the actions in front of us, you got parcel one into eighty-two lots. Phase two will subdivide parcels two, three and four. We went into that action. An existing residential building is located and we come to parcel three and parcel three, which is an existing building in development, is saying we want to defer this for two years, this improvement agreement, two years, while phase one gets going, phase two and three. So what I, I'm just drawing is that this action is a bit exclusive from parcel one. It would be irregardless of parcel one. As it moves into phase two, that's when then phase two will sub, subdivide parcels three and four. And it's at that point in time when this agreement or this deferral would come, but the deferral starts now. If they don't get to parcel two development in two years, this actually expires. Is that, is that correct? If that development wouldn't happen for two years, this actually starts tonight.
The, the agreement would start with council's approval and the way the agreement is written, if two years comes, they are required to install the improvements.
Irregardless.
Irregardless. It's either at some point during the two years, when we tell you, the city tells you that we want the improvements to go in, you have to put them in, or at the end of two years, you have to put them in.
Okay. So coming back to that and isolating out that parcel three, I just also, and I think this, this is me repeating, and I think what, we're all on the same page. This isn't a special action. This isn't an action regarding a special issue for a developer project. It's one that's led to following policy and perhaps policies that we need to, if we want to as a council, we need to dive into an address on our parcels in the future, but that's the rule right now. Developers need constant fair rules. And developers also have the process, it's legitimate process to say, as we have here, we want to do a, a deferral improvement agreement. Now, as we move forward and I think isolating that and all the concerns that were addressed, absolutely, that where are we going to be protected in this process? I get, I, not debating that. I just want to make it clear, and I think especially clear for our audience and the constituents of isolating what actions took place. We as a council do read our materials, we follow that process. And here we are currently that I, I'm understanding, I think that the merit to the issue is, okay, within a two-year deferred agreement on parcel three, what are we going to do to cover our costs or just the risk assessment just with that? And I, I just hope that that makes it clear, I think for the audience, in my opinion, that that's one of the questions in front of us, and that's really the issue that we're looking at is just a two-year deferred agreement for parcel three as this project expands and develops. You wouldn't have the whole place, I don't want to repeat myself. That's just where we're at. Understand those concerns and I hope our conversation continues in the context and sticks to the facts of what's directly in front of us. That's, that's my view on it.
I, I would just hope that, uh, if we're going to approve this agreement, that there'd be some type of clarifying assignment paragraph in there.
Uh, council member, there, there is a paragraph in there regarding the recordation and there being binding on successors and successor grantees. Uh, that'd be paragraph eleven.
Thank you. So, uh, just to, to wrap up here for me, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think those are concerns and I appreciate the city manager's, uh, point of view, and I totally agree with that, but at the same time, you know, there is some, some uniqueness and special circumstances here as well. So, um, I, um, I just, I just want to make sure that the city's protected. We're not in a situation that we have found ourselves in with another development that, uh, we, uh, do what we have to do to make sure that, uh, this, this happens. I mean, uh, and you hate to have, you know, the way Mr. Vice Mayor Isherwood described it is if this particular parcel may be the only one that has a frontage improvement. Uh, so if, if the other phase is not built out or the other commitment is not done, uh, would that be accurate to say, uh, Michael, that in two years that parcel three would be the only one that has the improvements? If phase two is not built out?
I think at that point, council would have to make a decision about how quickly development is coming in that area and whether it makes sense to require those improvements to go in at that time. Uh, options could be you extend the agreement for an additional time period or if development is just completely died off and you don't anticipate the need in the foreseeable future, you could just allow the agreement to expire.
We've had experience on that. If you extend it, you ask for an increased bond to cover what that cost is going to be. And then you keep doing that. It can last for an extended period of time. And at some point or another, you call the bond. I mean, we've had experience with.
Just make sure that there's language in the agreement to require, um, reevaluation, reassessment of the required security annually.
So again, but you're saying that there's the possibility, and would that require a council action? That you say, okay, well, nothing's being built around you, so hey, you don't have to build anything.
The way it's structured right now, it automatically requires the improvements to go in at the end of the two years. Unless, so they, the property owner would have to come to council and ask for, at council action to either extend the agreement or waive the agreement, allow it to expire.
So at this point in time, is the staff, uh, answered your concerns?
Okay. One last clarification. Uh, under paragraph eleven, does the original property owner still, is the original property owner still obligated? Or once the property is transferred, they're relieved of obligation?
My interpretation would be that they would be relieved. It would be the then current successor who would be bound by the agreement.
Would we want to include, have continuing liability for the property? Or would that be highly unusual and be considered just for this one particular?
Right. So, so could you, sure, you could require it. It would be pretty unusual, and I think you're going to have a tough time.
Okay.
Um, you know, actually making those transfers, right, with the original owner still on the hook. That's a tough sell.
Following the recommendation of our city manager, he would recommend that we not do that. Is that correct?
It would be the first time in my career I've ever dealt with that, and I would highly recommend it again.
All right. If, if there's a, a consensus, can we have, um, a, a motion?
Well, I just want to understand, Councilman Madero, so I specifically appreciate your question, and I totally endorse that position. Are, are you comfortable, the assignment and, and you, you've been through this process before and then in that, I, I know I, I would like to know that, that your concerns are being addressed and you're comfortable with that.
Well, when it's recorded, the property becomes the collateral. And the real question at that point is, what is ahead of it of record that might diminish the collateral that we're taking? In other words, uh, if, if this is recorded and there's a deed of trust before it that, uh, encumbers a substantial amount of the property, we may not have as much collateral as we normally would. If there's nothing on the property, we've got a lot of collateral and we're protected in addition to the bond that Mr. Miller indicated. So to that extent, uh, I think Mario would agree that, uh, we're adequately protected for that two-year period.
Yeah, I would. I mean, it's, it's primarily the bond is, is your first source, because that's unique to the city. Uh, the, the, any equity that's left over the property.
And, and the key would be in the future, if there's extensions that are requested, we make a real point or the council make a real point at that time to have that bond reflect exactly what it's going to cost to, uh, do the construction.
Yes.
So that being said, I think the mayor's waiting for someone to make a motion.
Yep, give me one second. Yes, uh, I will make the motion, Madam Mayor, to approve a short-term deferred improvement agreement with Susan D. Johnson trustee or successor. Maybe approve a short-term deferred improvement agreement with Susan D. Johnson trustee and or successor in the trust under the Fulton Liv, Living Trust dated May twenty-sixth, two, two thousand nine. As per our council discussion, to defer the construction of Teleria Avenue SR one thirty-seven frontage improvements along parcel three of the tentative parcel map, two thousand twenty-two dash oh six.
I'll second the motion. Do we want to have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Isherwood?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Councilmember Harold?
Aye.
Councilmember Sagala?
No.
Councilmember Maderis?
Aye.
Passes four to one. All right, ten point five.
Uh, just on this one, it's just similar idea. I think one of the concerns, one of the questions I had was, and I talked to, to Michael Miller about this, was that um, in regards to setting up this particular district, uh, assessment district, it just, it's just on phase one or is it for the whole development or, uh, and, and how, how does that process work? Because I think one of the concerns would be that if there are things that are going to be uh, maintained, I guess, medians or flower beds or things that need to be maintained, there's a guarantee that they will be maintained and who ultimately will be responsible for it.
Yes, so the assessment district boundaries would take in the entire, um, tentative subdivision, subdivision map of Fulton Estates, so that's all phases. And it would include, or, um, uh, let's see, um, it would include the maintenance of all, um, common lot areas. So basically landscaping along Teleria Avenue, Oakmore Street, then any of the park improvements and the proposed neighborhood park. So in perpetuity, basically.
Right. And so those improvements would be made from the day they're put in, regard, so in terms of like development, they develop it as they go along, as they build those lots out. So that would, that would be done from day one, so there wouldn't be any time lapse, like six months a year where no one's cutting anything and things are overgrown.
Right.
And all that.
The way, the way the city establishes these districts is we base the, the costs and the potential future assessments on complete build out. So basically, we're going to identify the costs of what it, what it would be to maintain all of the improvements for the entire tentative subdivision map. And then actually, we wouldn't start assessing fees until improvements start getting put in. So phase one would eventually come along, they'd install some improvements. At that point, once they were complete and accepted by the city, then we would start assessing just based upon those phase one, uh, landscaping improvements. And then as phase two came in and constructed its share of the landscaping improvements, the costs would be increased because now you're, but you're spreading it out over the additional lots as well.
All right. Thank you.
Ready to approve that item?
Just with, uh, Councilman Sagala, and I appreciate staff talk of, uh, Michael, one of the things that we had, I had shared today, I think goes with ten point five, and Councilman Sagali, you were asking about, you know, per se, maintenance, and I had a question about sustainability. But Michael, my understanding is this is setting up the LDM, but concerns are addressing funding or really not just maintenance, but sustainability of actions that comes, uh, in the later actions.
So that's correct. There's two resolutions involved in, in establishing a landscape maintenance district. This first one is just stating your intent to establish the district and setting the date for a public hearing. And this in particular is establishing June sixteenth as the date that you'll hold, hold a public hearing um, to consider establishing the assessment district. So at that time, um, you would be presented with the engineer's report where we show the estimated costs and the estimated, um, maximum assessments that would be charged for that district.
Thank you. And the, and the reason why I want that mentioned is because I kind of absorbed some of your concern, which I, I think that's the appropriate time is to come back, look at the funding mechanism. What are those requirements for funding? And from, from, from what I have seen and want to go through is there's bushes and plants that are initiated of with the district, but compared to just trimming them, it's also replacing them and keeping it to the original standards that was placed on the development. And so I look forward to that discussion and steps that need to happen at that point in time to help with that.
Yeah, so we have a motion too. He's not in motion mode tonight.
All right. Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve ten point five landscape maintenance district twenty twenty-four dash oh two for Fulton Estates as presented in the staff report.
Second? You see second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five to one. All right, that concludes, uh, consent items. We'll move on to general business. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by the council. So Melissa is uh. You're handling this first item.
Um sure. Good evening, council. This item is coming before you again. We um brought this item to you at a special meeting. Um two weeks ago to give you an opportunity to review um applications and interview applicants who are interested in um filling positions. That are going to become vacant as of January one um on council-appointed boards, commissions, and committees. So tonight, your your job is to. Basically make those appointments. Um we recommend that you make those appointments tonight and not not defer the appointments. Due to possible quorum issues if you do um hold off on appointments.
Do we uh are you recommending that we do committee by committee or do them collectively?
I'm recommending that you go through. So. If you look at the aviation committee, there's three seats that are expiring at the end of this year. You need to make three appointments, whether it's reappointing. Um the current person that wants to be reappointed or um appointing a new person to the committee. So go just go through each committee.
She's saying committee by committee. I I didn't hear exactly. I'm gonna have to get a hearing aid. Uh so we're going committee by committee. Person by person. Okay, thank you. So we'll start with the aviation committee. We have two uh applicants that are already on the uh committee. It's my responsibility to appoint. I will uh reappoint Chris Colson and Robert Smith. And Ryan Wilson did not reapply, and I'd like to uh submit Alma Serrano to fill that position.
Now. I'd make a motion to uh affirm and and confirm the uh appointment by the mayor to the aviation committee.
All those in favor?
Second by Mr. Harold.
I know, I hear him go. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we'll we'll move to the next uh committee, which is the Board of Public Utilities. We have, we're going to uh re I'm reappointing Renee Soto and Tony Suzino. Uh there is an opening and um I'm sit I'm appointing Brian Nunes. To that position on the BP, the B B P, whatever it's called, BPU. All right. Uh moving on to the Committee on Aging.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, oh, yeah, you have to tell me it's okay.
And Mr. Nunes is.
And Mr. Nunes is here.
Anybody's got him.
Can we hear from him? Can we hear from him?
Yeah, he's right here. Right there.
Just a little bit of my background. I think one of the one of the things that I asked for you is that, you know, I. I've been working hard the last couple of years to really diversify our commissions and committees throughout the whole city. And so I'm I'm curious, I mean, if the mayor makes the appointment, I get to vote yes or no on them, but I'd like to kind of. Hear from you because, you know, to be honest with you, I really like to to see the BPU a little more diverse than what it is now.
Okay.
But uh like to hear just your background.
Well, um. I was born and raised in Tulare, uh graduated from Saint Al Wishes. And then went to uh Tulare Western, graduated in two thousand. And from there, I went to Fresno State. And graduated in two thousand four, and I started a uh personal finance investment career um. In oh four oh five, and I've been doing that ever since and. Married and have three kids, go to Mission Valley and Tulare Western.
And you live on outside.
I live in uh in Delago. Yeah.
Any other question?
I know Mr. Nunes personally, and I think the mayor's made an excellent uh decision. Uh and I would make a motion to adopt the three candidates the mayor has suggested for appointment.
Second.
She's been um moved and seconded to accept the BPU appointments. Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mr. Nunes, for being here tonight. We'll move on to the Committee on Aging. This is appointed by council seat. Miss, yeah, Councilman Sagala, District One.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh council. I um like I mentioned, the last council meeting, I I wanted to um. Thank uh Ms. Malloy for her service on this committee. I know she's been a very important. Uh part of it and very involved and uh provided tremendous leadership in regards to her service. On the Committee of Aging, on a committee on aging. Um but as I mentioned previously, uh on the item before. You know, I've been working very hard to uh to do as much as I can, when I can. Uh to bring some diversity uh to our uh commissions um and committees. Not only uh, you know, when I first got elected seven years ago out of the forty-nine. Count out of the forty-nine or so commissioners, there was only one that reside resided west of. The railroad tracks. And so I'm glad today there's a maybe there's three out of the forty-nine. And so I want to be able to continue to. To to bring some diversity, not from geography, but just from the look of our of our uh councils, from different perspectives, different backgrounds. And so with that in mind, uh I've given this opportunity to appoint uh someone to the committee that I will. Uh take this opportunity to uh appoint Ms. Celeste Caleno. Uh to serve as my appointee on the uh Committee on Aging. And again, I wanted to thank uh Ms. Malloy for her uh leadership throughout the the years on this commission. And wish her well, but that would be my my recommendation and ask of my council colleagues to approve.
I think I I would suggest that we continue with the uh appointment of council seat two by by the.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. Um so I'm going to reappoint Ralph Cantu. He's served for one year and desires to continue serving on this committee. So that's who I am appointing.
Second.
I'll make a motion to uh to uh. Adopt the appointments made by Mr. Sagala and the mayor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the Measure I Citizen Oversight Committee, neither of the um previous uh members have reapplied. So I have Council Seat Two and Council Seat Four, both um are to appoint someone new. So I am appointing Jonathan Juarez. Uh to Council Seat Two.
And I'm appointing Jonathan Juarez. Wait, wait a minute. Did you?
Yes, are we doing the same person?
Yeah, I I talked to him beforehand about whether he'd be well. Did you talk to him?
No, I just love this.
Well, I did, and he agreed to take my seat.
Well, I'll I'll have to reevaluate by that. So we'll come back to that one.
I was halfway through then and realized that's what she just said.
Same name. We need to, we need to talk to each other. We talked about a lot of things, but not that.
That's right.
Okay, um so can we come back to that one then?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Parks and Recreation Commission. Council Seat One.
Again, uh Madam Mayor Council, I wanted to thank Ms. Fishbough for her uh leadership and participation on this commission. Uh and her uh involvement in uh addressing uh youth uh issues and recreation issues. But at this point, I'd like to uh make the recommendation to appoint Mr. Lupi Mendoza uh to serve on that commission on my behalf. As a council seat appointment.
And for my seat, Council Seat Two, I'm going to reappoint Eric Ferencoff.
And for Council Seat Three, I'm gonna reappoint Nicholas Sherwood.
Seat Five.
If you're wondering why I'm silent is because I have no appointment.
Oh, it's four.
We're it's for Parks and Rec. I'm going to uh uh reappoint Armando de Silva to Council Seat Four.
Great. All right.
I will make a motion to uh have the council adopt the uh appointments that have been indicated uh for each seat.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to one. We'll move on to uh the Planning Commission. Council Seat Two, that's me. I am appointing Susan Henard to that position. Council Seat Four.
I'm uh reappointing Sandra Miller.
Council Seat Five.
Re uh proposed reappointment of Charles McGill to Council Seat Five.
Okay. You have a motion?
I would make the motion to the to approve the three appointments as presented to the mayor.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna go back to uh the one where we appointed the same person.
On the Measure I, I will, as indicated before, having talked to him and having preference. Appoint Jonathan Juarez, who's in the audience for appointment.
And I will appoint Jamie Mendez.
I'll make a motion to adopt both.
All those in favor? Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I believe that is it for boards and uh.
We had a we had a few brand new ones, if I'm correct. Susan Henard, uh Lupi Mendoza.
Would you like?
And I know.
Susan's here.
Yeah, Mr. Mendoza is here. Congratulations, Mr. Mendoza. Look forward to your service. On the Parks and Rec. And then Susan uh Henard is here as well. And I don't necessarily need to be me. I'm just recognizing that. And then uh Sagali, you had um Elma, was it?
Celeste.
Celeste Delano? Yes, Celeste, if you raise your hand. There we go, Celeste, thank you. I don't have my glasses on, so I'm looking out at wherever's out. But I just wanted to say congratulations to our new appointments.
Well, and Alma Serrano is here also, who is the new appointment to the Aviation Committee.
Okay, so I was, all right, I'm just getting my committees wrong. I'm not trying to miss anybody. Alma, Celeste, Mr. Mendoza, Senator, everybody. I just wanted to recognize that, and it's great to have you on board in the.
And really, I'd like to thank all those who applied because we had more applications for the boards and commissions than we've ever had. Which in I think indicates um a revival. Uh our city is really moving in positive directions, and I think people see an opportunity to uh to serve. And I really, I think we all appreciate that so much. So thank you all for.
And um do we, or to make sure, do we, I think as noted about thanking those who have served. And changing, but does the city do a certificate, like a a certificate of service or thank you for your service? A certificate of appreciation sent out to them.
Yes, so on um the agenda for January sixteenth, um I'll have an item on there so that you can publicly recognize those outgoing um numbers.
Moving on then to eleven point two, the establishment of a Historic Preservation Committee. Um Mr. Anaya, or do we want to have our, do you want to speak first, Chris, or? Come on down.
Give people an opportunity to leave their here.
Yeah, if there's anyone that needs to uh to vacate the chambers because you don't want to stay the whole time, feel free. We appreciate you being here.
Madam Mayor and City Council and City Manager, I'm Chris Harold, uh lifelong Tularian. And I just wanted to voice my uh wholehearted support uh for the uh establishment of Historic Resources Committee. And also to offer my assistance in any way possible. Historic resources in general, whether it's a a building, a specific location, or even a a specific object, it helps all of us to. It helps to provide a tangible link with our past. Which provides a key to understanding and appreciation of our shared heritage and our collective identity. At the same time, when you expand that out and you look at uh as far as historical resources and you look at a historic district and even larger. Thing besides just one specific building, that uh sense of understanding and appreciation of our heritage and identity. It just uh increases that uh tenfold. And when all is said and done, it helps to reinforce pride in in the community. Uh this was something that I uh talked with uh both Tracy and Rob Hunt when he was here and the Planning Commission uh several years ago. Uh as far as trying to do something along these lines, uh things weren't quite in place to be able to do that at that time. Uh now, uh given uh the way things are going in our community and and everything else, uh it's really ripe. Uh for the for this time in order for something like this uh to happen. And then on a final note, I would also uh recommend uh what is uh being recommended as well is. Having this essentially kind of fall under a a subcommittee, so to speak. Um one of the main reasons why, even though uh the Historic Resources Survey has been in place for a long time. Uh one of the reasons why a lot of this hasn't ever happened, uh not to any fault of any uh. Community Development Directors or Planning Commission uh members over time. But this section regarding historic resources is just such a small piece of their pie. Of what they have to deal with day in and day out. So as a result, uh it's been hard, you know, to get anything done. Which is why if you do have a subcommittee, say, under the the Planning Commission itself, for example. You allow that committee to actually focus just laser focus just on that. And uh as a result, you'll have proper oversight. And legwork can actually happen and things can actually get accomplished. Uh but again, uh wholehearted support for this and uh given our overall history that we have in our town. Compared to other towns our size, uh we really, you know, are above and beyond on so many different levels. And to be able to provide uh cultural resources, whether where people can see it with their own eyes, can touch it with their hands. Walk in the same places. Uh that will, again, just reinforce that appreciation for our history. And hopefully also reinforce the appreciation of their own personal histories of who they are and where they come from as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mario?
Um I want to thank Mr. Harold for his comments. I'll. I think I'll begin my brief presentation just by kind of um pulling off of that and then ending with. What is on the books in terms of our our city ordinance and maybe some staff recommendations. So. Um as Mr. Harold presented, uh Tulare does have a rich history. We do have a history of um several resources, individual buildings. Events that have occurred. Um really, Tulare was fairly instrumental in the history of the of this section of San Juan Valley. Um and we, back in December eighteenth, two thousand and seven, the Tulare City Council at that time passed ordinance. Oh, seven twenty-eight, which actually established the Historic Preservation Chapter in the city's municipal code. So this, which we call the historic preservation ordinance. So that that ordinance has been on the books since two thousand and seven. Um there have been a number of historic resources surveys uh conducted over the years by past directors and consultants. That have identified a number of buildings as potentially eligible. Uh. Buildings either eligible at the local level, but some at the state, and we actually have one neighborhood that is. Was determined at the time eligible for the National um Historic uh Register of Historic Places, excuse me. Um so we do have a few resources in town. We have. Two that are on the on National Register of Historic Places. I'm sorry, one on National Register of Historic Places, two at the state level. What we don't have in Tulare, we do not have a formal local register of historic resources that has been officially designated. Even though we have an ordinance to carry out that task. Um so as it stands now. City staff does not have a register nor does the Planning Commission have the charge to uh oversee designated buildings. Other than those that have already been protected, which I mentioned, um which are the um. Tulare Union High School Auditorium and Administration Building. There is the Tulare Water Tower and the site of the Tulare Assembly Center. Uh during World War Two. Uh so with that, um at the request of council, at the last council meeting on December fifth. Uh council voted unanimously to place this item on the agenda and received information from staff. Currently, the way the ordinance is written, it's a fairly good ordinance. It's been put in place. I have some experience in this field in my former career. So when I came here, I I um had a few folks look at it, both at the state level um and neighboring cities. They say we have a pretty good ordinance as as is in place, and it actually charges the Planning Commission. Um with review authority of any designation. with review authority of any designations, applications that are put forward by property owners to have their property designated as landmark. Ultimate decision does fall on council, so anything that is presented for designation, whether it's a district or an individual building, would eventually come to council for, for any final approval. And as Mr. Harrell alluded to, some, some cities do have a subcommittee or, for example, in neighboring by city, they have an architectural, I believe it's the Architectural Resources Board Committee. And so, they will review any exterior modifications to any registered buildings and the like. And the reason this has kind of taken more, has come to attention more at the, at the staff level for sure, the council level now. We do have property owners, particularly in our downtown, that have started to invest in some of these older buildings, several of which have been evaluated. And Mr. Harrell mentioned a number of benefits that historic preservation provides. Certainly, it's, it can be used as a tool for tourism, placemaking, economic development as well. One of the real practical things it also does, even with being designated on the local register, is, is it allows access to the California Historical Building Code. And the reason that's important is some of these older buildings that are currently being adaptably reused for new uses. It's very exciting, but it can also be very costly to bring them up to current code. By having buildings designated officially, it allows property owners to still modify their buildings in a safe manner, but in a manner that doesn't, that is sensitive to the historic context of the building. And so, it's more performance based versus a very prescriptive code, which is found under current building code. There's a number of other things like tax credits that property owners can take advantage of with the historic building. The city would have access to more grants. There are cities, for example, in Hanford, they, they're part of the Main Street Program that's tied into historic preservation. So, there's a number of, of things that come into play. But as part of this, if council so desires to move forward and begin accepting applications, whether it's directly to the Planning Commission or setting up an architectural review board as well, there'd be a lot of information that would have to also take place to property owners, to the community at large. One of the things that's important to note for council is historic preservation does not mean no change ever. It allows change to occur to like an older building per se, but to respect the context of, of the history, whether it's architectural, whether it's tied to a historic event. Some of you may know that the Old Dorities has a plaque outside that's one of the last remnants of the historic Chinatown that existed here in Tulare. So, there's a lot of things that can be done. There seems to be some energy. I've been approached by a few folks in the community that are interested and what can we do to have more historically designated locations? And so, that is a summary, very brief, but I just wanted to allow time for, for council to ask any questions. And again, this evening, from staff's perspective, if council so desires, it would be to either direct staff to come up with an application, to start fielding requests for historic place or resource designations or any alternate direction to staff, whether that means making revisions to the Historic Preservation Ordinance or to set up a separate committee. Again, the current code authorizes the Planning Commission to ask as a, to act as a review board with ultimate authority, recommendations or denials that would be forwarded to the City Council for ultimate approval.
Is there anyone else in council that wishes to speak or address before this issue? I know there are some people out there that it means a lot to. I don't know if you want to say anything?
Mayor, council, staff, yeah, this is of big interest to us for our building downtown. Just for, you know, like Mario said.
I think for the audio that's recording, you need to identify yourself.
Sorry?
I think you need to identify yourself for the audio.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Lemus. I have a building downtown Tulare. This is, yeah, this has been a hot button for us because we're trying to restore this building and it gives us the leeway to be able to do those things and not chop it up to bring it to today's code. I mean, we're still going about it safely, don't get me wrong, but it, we want to keep the fabric of the, this, a building's history. Not only from our building standpoint, I look at the Women's Club, the Lenders Building, you know, these old buildings that are just kind of sitting there dead today and these are, will bring forth opportunities to keep them in place or as is. Sorry, my voice is a little off today. So, I would, I hope for you guys' support on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council?
Madam Mayor, when I brought this forward, requested council approval of putting it on the agenda, I was aware of the ordinance, historic existence, that like so many we've had here in town, it just sits there. Nothing ever happens with it. So, my proposal is that we start the application process, but I would also, and definitely keep it under the Planning Commission. But I would also like to see a group of citizens, businessmen, Michael, for example, to have some input. They're the ones that are down there and are going to be involved in this, knowing the building, to be able to input the Planning Commission and also use Mario, because I'm aware of Mario's background in this, which is extensive, that he would be their, their point of contact on issues. But they would not make any decisions. They would just be a.
Advisory.
Advisory committee. And we, we proceed with this downtown area right now. I could see in the future, when this thing proves to be successful, that we start moving, say, west down Tulare Street. We pick up the Women's Clubhouse, the Masonic Lodge. We could take the Congressional, Congregational Church and then drop down the Masses Church, which are, both of them are well over a hundred years old. There's a few houses in there that also meet that criteria. So, that would be my proposal.
I guess I just had a couple of questions in for staff is, you know, I've, I've had the opportunity in previous careers, I guess, opportunities to serve on different commissions. And the, the question I have and, and the, the thing I've come across a lot has been, well, we have this historic designation, this historic preservation. I can't change my roof. I can't change out my windows. Is that, is any of that, I mean, would affect buildings? I know that, that, that the idea, I kind of, I kind of refer it to more like an HOA type of thing, where you can't, you know, change a color out or you can't change out a window because it's a hundred year old window. Or are any of those things, I mean, I appreciate the investment people are making downtown, but my, my number one question from my experience is if someone were to designate your building historical landmark, is that going to preclude you from certain things? I mean, is that, because that's what my understanding of historical preservation is, right? You know, we don't want you to take a nice Spanish bungalow and make it into a box type of thing, right? So, is that, is that what could happen with this ordinance?
So, let me try to, there's a lot there. Thank you, council member. That is a common, I will say some of it is a misconception, some of it is accurate. You are allowed to modify. Well, first of all, this council should know our ordinance, it, it's voluntary. So, property owner would bring forward their property if it hasn't been designated. They'd have to be willing to have it designated as a landmark. I suppose the city could take, the current ordinance allows council to, to take the initiative, Plan Commission. I, as the director, could do it.
But, but yeah, well, just real quick on that, it, can I, I, the house I used to live in a long time ago in LA, someone tried to make that house historical because Carrie McWilliams lived there and a couple of other people lived in the house that I lived in. They tried to force it on us. I didn't go into the city of LA and say, hey, make my house a historical. Someone from the public tried to do that. We fought it off and it didn't happen. So, would the ordinance allow me to go and, they don't have to do it, but can I go? Just because I think it's a pretty building and I want to preserve it, does the ordinance allow for anybody in the public to do that?
It does not allow for anybody in the public, at least our ordinance. It would have to be at least the property owner or representative or, like I mentioned, member of council, Plan Commission Director. There are public hearings, there's a process. Designation is not something that can be done over the counter. So, there'd be a whole public hearing process that'll take place. Council has ultimate say. And if a property is designated historic, there's what's what are called a contributing elements or features of what makes it a historic. If it, if it's tied to the architecture, then you're allowed to replace your roof or windows as long as they're sympathetic to the architectural style. Now, if the windows are what are the features that are called out in, in the designation, which is the whole form that actually prepared a report, then those have to be preserved in a manner that doesn't take away from its historic fabric. If the roof, if that's not one of the features that's called out, you could replace the roof. So, it's, it's not, I want to give you a black and white yes/no answer, but it, it depends on the building and it depends on the features. So, it's, it's, you know, it gives you the authority to, really, it's, it's, you know, it allows you to protect the building, but it doesn't, there's a lot of parameters that, that it has to go through to, to be designated.
Yeah, and if I, if I could add just a couple of comments. So, we're talking about different, there's probably two different things here. If you're talking about identifying a property or structure for regi, to be included in the National Register of, Register of Historic Places, the National Register, right, that's a national designation. That's different than what we're talking about here, which is a local designation. It's true, anybody could, could, could try to get a property listed on the National Register of Historical Places. It doesn't require a property owner agreement to be able to do that, but it doesn't necessarily mean a whole lot just to be able to do that. It, it only really matters when you do that if, there's a couple of ways it matters. One is if there's federal or state dollars put into it, that's going to add restrictions into what you can do, what you can use the property for, how you can renovate it, so on and so forth. Or, and/or, if you have a locally designated review board that's actually involved in, like an architectural review board, kind of like you described in HOA, where they're actually reviewing the design and, and making approvals on what can be done. That's not really what staff is recommending at this point in time. What, what we're talking about is simply moving forward with a process where we engage the ordinance, right? We take advantage of the ordinance. For the, really, the sole purpose at this point is to, for property owners, to identify properties that want to be listed locally, right, as historical resources, that gives them the ability to take advantage of the historic preservation component of the California Building Code, which now means to Mario's point, you might have windows, for example, that, that are contributing attributes to that structure. It doesn't mean you can't replace that window. It just means, let, let's say it's, it's, it's a single hung window. It's got an upper sash and a lower sash and it's got nine lights in the, or six lights in the top and one light in the bottom. It just means when you go to replace that under Historic Building Code, it's going to still have to meet the energy code. It still should have six lights in the top, one in the bottom. But, but how you go about achieving the building code, you have more flexibility in how you achieve that. It's still going to be a huge benefit to property owners. Well, I don't know how huge, but it'll be a benefit to the property owners downtown. That, in my opinion, right now, should be all we consider. We shouldn't, in my opinion, not talk about, let's create a board that's going to review all the designs and approve the colors. Let's look and expand it to the whole city. Let's start looking at the downtown for the primary purpose of preserving some of this historic structures, but largely giving the property owners the ability to take advantage of the building code aspects of it and see how that goes. And if it goes well, we could talk about, you know, if you want to expand in the future, do that. But that's a baby step versus chewing more than we could probably handle.
And would you recommend that it stay under the purview of the Planning Commission?
I would, but I really liked the recommendation that there maybe be a working committee. And the reason for that is, the reason we haven't brought this forward at this point yet, at this point in time, is because staff is frankly overwhelmed with all the other things we're doing. But if there's a working committee of citizens that council could appoint and we can bring that back at a future date, where those citizens, and if they're working with a consultant or somebody who, who's willing to put the legwork in, because to Mario's point, you got to look at each building and start identifying what are the unique characteristics of those building and why is it historic, so on and so forth. What needs to be preserved? And you have to detail some of that out. Staff doesn't really have the energy and time to do that quite yet, but if the committee's doing that with staff's help and oversight, that would be a great way to move that effort forward and then bring it ultimately to the commission for their adoption.
Well, if it's under the purview of the Planning Commission as opposed to the council determining who serves with the planning, shouldn't the Planning Commission be making that determination?
And I would defer to whatever council's wishes are, yes.
Is there a cost for the application or for the process? You guys haven't determined that yet?
As part of the, the way the ordinance is written now, it'd be similar to a zone amendment. It, it does, the way it's written in our code, it would, it would be processed similar to a zone amendment. And I think the only reason, if I had to guess why it was written that way technically on the zoning map, if, if a property is listed as a landmark, it would have like an H designation next to it. Maybe we color it different on the map, but it would go through a same process.
What's that fee right now? What's the, the zone?
I didn't bring my fee list. I think off the top of my head, it's like twenty-nine ninety-six or something, just under three thousand dollars.
And then I guess in, in the ordinance that's set up, there's a, a different folks who can bring forward the application, correct? Or the, and that includes council. So, if, if one of my colleagues here wanted to do the Women's Center or, or some other building, then would that cost be absorbed by the city or how would that work?
Yes, so.
Because I know we've had this conversation in the past where someone could appeal, but if the council appeals, do we pay, you know, a decision from the Planning Commission or, so I know that, I know it's in there, so I just want to make sure we clarify that. If it's going to cost three thousand dollars, if Mr. Isherwood wants to bring something forward, is that going to be waived because he's council or?
There's nothing in the, to that level of detail in the ordinance. It simply states that designation of the historic resource may be initiated by the council, the commission, the secretary, which would be me, the property owner, or an authorized representative of the owner. It shall be filed with the, with the city using a form approved by the secretary and shall include the following information. It says that the fee can be set. So, again, that's why my recommended action, it was, if it's so, if, if it is council's desire, that would be one of the first steps is creating that application form.
So, I, that's one of my questions about what, what application form the staff would begin preparing. I understand when we talk about a, a historic district. If I understand correctly, the city manager is, is suggesting that we make downtown a historic district in order to take advantage of that?
That's, let me try to, so.
He's saying no.
Yeah, a historic district is a whole nother, so there, there's two processes. There's a historic resource, which is in, in an individual building, a historic site. A district is a geographic area boundary.
Right. I understand what a district is. So, what we're talking about is a resource is, let me just use the Women's Clubhouse as an example. So, I've been given the direction by, by the city manager or the council, I don't remember who, to make project, to look at the project of the Women's Clubhouse. So far, we've spent ten thousand dollars to weatherize the building. And I was given, you know, go ahead and raise money from the public sector to, to start to, you know, be able to renovate, not renovate, restore, to restore the Women's Clubhouse. So, I've hesitated starting that because of that the land doesn't belong to us. And so, I know we're in the process of trying to get the railroad to do something to give us access to, to that land so that we, so I haven't done a thing and I think I only have a year to do that, but it's fruit, fruitless for me to start to do something like that. Is this committee or this, this preservation committee, is that something that they would do?
So, that, that, that would be, if I'm understanding correctly, the, the financial aspect of the renovate, that, that's a separate. In other words, somebody could designate that building to be on the local landmark list and it could be a designated historic resource if it makes it through the process.
But that's not the form we're talking about here.
That, that is the.
That is the form. Okay, so it's to designate the Women's Clubhouse or the Masonic Lodge or the Congregational Church specifically.
Yes.
And then that gives flexibility in renovating the building or restoring the building.
That's correct. It also, I mean, this is, obviously, I don't know that, it's been a while since we've had, had access to these grants here because we don't have any historic resources, but there are grants out there for, for qualified historic buildings, for example. So, maybe it could qualify for something like that. So, this would just be to start a, an application for the designation of historic resources.
And once designated, then we can apply for the grants.
Correct. Any, any grants.
It doesn't happen simultaneously. One comes before the other.
My, and again, I'm, I'm just speaking generally, but my understanding for any historic preservation grants, usually it has to be a designated resource.
Okay.
And the only reason why we're, even though we say focus on the downtown, we're not really talking necessarily about a district, is because in order for you to actually designate a district, you're going to need to have at least fifty-one percent more of the structures to be contributing to the district. It may be a nice idea to do that and I'm sure the committee could look at that. I don't know they're going to be able to get. It may be a nice idea to do that, and I'm sure the committee could look at that, I don't know they're going to be able to get at least fifty-one percent of the structures to actually qualify as historic would be the challenge, that's why. Probably a lot quicker and easier just to identify buildings for right now, yeah.
So a district might be on the west side, when you look at the oldest part of the city where every house could be considered historical.
In the future.
Yeah, in the future, so I mean, I'm just interested in the Women's Clubhouse, as you know, so, yeah.
There would be nothing that would prevent you from, if, if council said let's move forward with this application process, there'd be nothing to prevent you or somebody else from. Nominating the Women's Clubhouse, I'm just saying, for as far as the committee's effort and staff efforts, start downtown, because if we start going citywide. It's going to get out of control quickly, we won't have time to do everything.
And I, I always am saying that the Women's Clubhouse is very close to downtown. And could really be an asset to downtown.
The uh, I appreciate kind of going through these bits and pieces. Um, there, there are some items that kind of got my attention that perhaps kind of walked through. So implementing this, this has already been drafted, uh, my first question is regarding section ten ninety-six oh six oh. Talking about the historic resources, so per se, as we have said, you wouldn't have to be the property owner, somebody else. The appropriate group could come and make that designation of your property and building. And as it goes through that process, in section B three, it does state, the property owner and or any authorized representative shall be prohibited. From undertaking any alteration, construction, grading, demolition, or removal of such property. And no permit to undertake such work shall be issued by the city for ninety days. From the day the department mails the notice of hearing to determine horse, historic resource designation to the property owner. Any or, or any other authorized representative. So, I, I don't want to misinterpret this to be some extreme measure, per se, but of my understanding is if I, per se, were in the middle of something. And this came up, you would be halted from your work, as this states for ninety days and. Uh, good, bad, or otherwise, I mean, that, this does have some teeth to it. Uh, potentially, somebody who's not you could come in and halt your project on your property under this. Under what is written in this ordinance, and.
That exists today, right?
Well, yes, and, and maybe this is, my interpretation of, of the ordinance is. Any authorized representative, when it talks about authorized representative, it's of, of the property. I know some cities, again, if it's like National Register listed, it could be a member of the public, generally. Um, but I think this is referring to any authorized representative who's doing that work. Can be halted, the department, if it was a designated historic resource, you're correct, the council member. That, that could occur if we had a committee that had to review alterations, and you were undertaking the alterations. Then that would be the procedure to follow.
But once that property owner, under our ordinance, once that property owner agrees, they, they nominate, or their representative nominates this property, and it. Become, it goes through the process and gets identified, then, yeah, I mean. They don't get to just tomorrow decide to demolish the building, I mean, they're going to have to go through some kind of process to do that.
Yeah, and, and by all means, I'm not trying to pick this apart, but I think it's just critical, because once, we have an ordinance in black, and it's in black and white, and it's. Printed and published, but it could be the other way around, which is, I'm doing some improvements. For whatever reason, this gets petitioned to become, and that's why I'm understanding this process. That therefore, the purpose of this hearing, we would mail the owner of the property, the proposal for the designation. And that when you receive that, if I'm in the middle of something, it doesn't have to be the property owner, because it states the property owner. Shall be prohibited from undertaking, so if I'm in the middle of something, this gets designated. You have to stop, once you receive that notice, ir- irregardless of. That's what I'm saying, you could not be part of this process, but you have to stop, that's, that's what this is walking me through.
Yes, this is intended, um, in talking to my colleagues in Visalia, they had a, a particular case where this, something exactly like this applies. But they didn't have this ordinance, and what occurred there was. A property owner had a piece of property, very significant in the history, I guess, of the city, but they chose to start. Trying to demolish it or making some substantial alterations, they didn't have a permit. So I think code enforcement or someone from building division went out and said, hey, you need to go in and get a permit. And so that triggered like, hey, this is one of our historic properties, so now there's a hearing date that has to be established before the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Before they can proceed with their project. And so, they, they didn't have anything like that on the books to prevent that property owner, I'm just continuing to allow it to deteriorate or demolishing it. Um, because they didn't have these procedures in place, where it has to be heard by the committee.
And I could, I can absorb that, and I think that example could be to the positive, which if you had a historic building and the person says. I don't care, I'm ripping those lead glass windows out and I'm doing this, wait, hold on, we have teeth to come in. So, there's the positive side, and I think the other dynamic, just being mindful of is. If that's not the case, and I'm wanting to do stuff, a, a person could also say. I don't like what you're doing, and I'm going to get government to stop you, and I know how to do that, which is to file this, I don't mean to take the cynical side, just awareness. That, understand, but also, the, the deciding factor here is everything, it can go before planning commission, but it comes before council. So as I'm saying, council is the final factor. So, like I said, I, I just want to walk through that, so there's an understanding of what the teeth that are here, that is possibilities. The other part, so once you do the designation. And a, a part that I think just being transparent on it is, could you explain the role of SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office? So once I understand we do this, this permit, can you help me to understand SHPO processes mentioned in here? What does that mean of working through the State Historic Preservation Office, and I have some experience what, working with that wonderful agents?
I have very limited experience, and you, but usually they are involved in reviewing. Anything, well, both on the Sequo side, as well as a historic uh, resource, that's through the Department of Parks and Recreation, DPR. But uh, they, so there, they will review, so for example, let's say we have a designation. Um, I mentioned two resources we have in the city, like the Water Tower. Um, Tillery Assembly Center, both of those to be listed in the California Register of Historic Resources. They are the reviewing party that has to, uh, do review, even though the project is in the city, they have to review it, that's their purview. They're also, they also have the authority to act on behalf of the federal government for any, any properties that are on National Register. I mentioned State Register, if something is considered a significant historical resource, even under Sequa or NEPA, the national law. You have to consult with them, so for, I'll give you an example on some of our CDBG projects. Um, where we're placing sidewalks, and most of the work is in the right of way. If there's historic properties or the one project in one of our historic neighborhoods. I had to work with our, uh, project management team, as well as the consulting team, to prepare correspondence that goes to SHPO. And it gives SHPO thirty days to review the finding we're making, which is. Hey, we're not having a negative effect on these historic buildings adjacent, because all the work is occurring in the right of way. Um, you know, we, it, it's not affecting the historic features, so the. State Historic Preservation Officer or SHPO has the authority to either agree, concur, not comment, or comment. But you have to wait those thirty days um, to be able to move forward with your project.
So, Council, Councilman, I can add to that if you like, the, what we're talking about this evening is. Basically, a local register, uh, SHPO really only gets involved when it's a federal or a state resource. Or a historical resource as defined under Sequa. So really, the role of SHPO, I don't think would change that much with uh, basically making. This ordinance a bit more active and uh, then, it's been sitting dormant for many years.
Well, the reason in reading ten ninety-six, ten point nine six point one one oh, and then going into ten point nine six one two oh. Is, and then I'm not saying I'm absolute, it, it doesn't make that designation, it's, it's a delin- deletion of demolished, relocated, or rescinded designated historic resources. So if I have a location that's designated historic, a historic resource. But, uh, so it's only applying after that, but it doesn't say if it's public or private, because it's designated historic resource. Shall cause such resource to be deleted from the local register, that has to go through SHPO as well, but. All in all, what it reads to me is, once your property is on the list. And you're going through whatever process, though it is bringing, or from my understanding, is we would go through SHPO because. We would have that as our local designated list, and even as you make improvements to a property on a local designated. List, since it is local, does that list go to SHPO, and therefore you have to transpire back and forth?
It's only, so that, speaking to that specific section, it deals with the deletion, demolish, relocate, or rescinded historic resources, once it's been designated. So the, the list we would administer locally, um, however, SHPO comes into play. Is if we have a historic district that's been established, for example, and there is uh, some desire to. Re- resigned it, or rescind it, or um, demolish a building in it, you know, uh, once a, a resource has been identified as historic. Or determined eligible for Na- National Register, it has those protections in place through Sequa, for example. And SHPO is, is the authority in terms of the, the advising or the responsible agency that would weigh in on.
So it's, yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill with this. But what, what it sound like to what you're saying, and if I'm understanding this, is the SHPO kicks in. If there's other state or federal designations, but to, to s- staff member.
Josh.
Josh, um, McDonald had said, if it's just put on the local list. That's not a SHPO conversation, it's only a move to the other designation.
Correct, that, and keep in mind uh, the funding, so, for example, CDBG projects have federal funding, that's why it requires consultation with the SHPO. If there's state funding that comes into play, but if it's all local or private, they really would not be involved, section one oh six.
So, thank you, I just wanted, just going through this and just some transparency to the process. Um, I know I'm, I'm asking these questions, I do completely endorse this. I also endorse, I think, with the spirit and context that the city manager had, and I, I think the council here is to start it. And then to start it, and then this is something to work through, of course, so, um, I just. I said, I just, it's in black and white, and wanted to make sure we understood some of the dynamics.
And if I could just add, you, in your ordinance, which already is on the books. There is two definitions of secretary, right, there's secretary, as the term secretary is defined, is essentially the planning director. That's the local person who keeps track of all this. The, the secretary of the, the State Historic Preservation Officer or Secretary, that's a different person, and again, that only comes into play if we go. We go big, we go large, right, if we're going to do National Register, if we're going to do a whole district, we send that to them, and I, my experience with that has also been. Not California, but in Florida, but most SHPOs operate similarly. They need to know what we're designating, so that if there's some big, let's say there's a big gas line that's going to go through somewhere, they want to be able to tell you, wait a minute, you want to put that gas line, but you realize. You're going to be impacting six locally designated structures in the process of doing that, it's just a way to make sure that, you know, things don't fall through the cracks.
Yeah, and I, I, I think just to conclude, because it was on my list and I don't miss. Is, is council in reviewing this process, is that fee that was talked about? How that fee is going to work, what does that mean, how's that applied, and I think again is, uh, if we're talking to the range of. Three thousand dollars, um, how and who is going to pay that, I think would be a concern to property owners. Just, if we work through that, so, I didn't, I understood that this isn't something that's going to go into place tomorrow. And if a property is mentioned by somebody, they're going to get a bill mailed for three thousand bucks, that's not, I don't want to jump to that. It's just mindful of, of that process.
And just to clarify for council, that, that would be, it's like when anyone comes to City Hall to apply for a zone amendment for. A different types of, type of zone, you fill out the application, they pay the fee for staff to begin processing that application, it would be similar, so it'd be the applicant. Uh, that would be providing the fee to go with the application.
So if you were to go, oof, uh, ignorantly, just like three thousand bucks, that seems high, is, is that something then? Council in the future wanted to bring up, or what does that look like, that council could bring it up, I guess, okay.
And it's part of our fee schedule, so we could always, um, you know, that, that's going to, that has to be approved and adopted, and that can be revised.
That's important. Are there any other questions or concerns before we um, make a motion? Do you want to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I just wanted to ensure that we. Had the citizens group in place, and how to word that, to make sure that it's going to be done, that we're going to have that input from these business people that are downtown, that this will impact. I'll make a rec, I'll make a motion to authorize Community Development Director to prepare the Historic Resources Designation Application Form. And again, taking designations, applications, requests. Also, to ensure that the planning commission establishes a citizens advisory committee. To advise them on this, and the committee would be made up of, uh, business people downtown or citizens downtown.
Does it have a second to that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes five, oh, any opposed? Passes five to one. Thank you, I think, I'm, I think there's a lot that can happen there. Okay, so I think we have one, let's see, eleven point three, lease agreement for Alpine Vista Property, Jason?
Thinking Madam Mayor, Council. Just going to wait for the PowerPoint to come up. Alpine Vista Property. First, we'll review a timeline of the Alpine Vista Property, the Cambridge Homes subdivision started in two thousand five, sometime after that, they started building homes. The Alpine Vista School was open in the fall of two, uh, two thousand thirteen. It's a K through eight grade school, and it's the largest of the fifteen schools in the Tillery City School District. The large tank on the Alpine Vista Property was completed in twenty nineteen. Discussions with the Alpine Vista Property in the Tillery City School District began in the spring of twenty twenty-three. The nearly six acre Alpine Vista property has been vacant for a little over eighteen years. Alpine Vista Property Challenges. The original Cambridge Homes Resolution document, there is a discussion of a park, but there's no specific approvals to create a park. In addition, it doesn't seem to describe or qualify what the park is supposed to be, or how it was conveyed. The difficulty associated with this is that until very recently, with the passage of the Quimby Ordinance, the city has had very few income. Sources to finance, construct, maintain and operate, operation of a park on the site. Due to this funding shortfall, the city staff has spent considerable time and energy researching alternative options for development. After a review by the city attorney's office, it was determined that if the property is not used for its original purpose. The city believes it was intended to be a park, it must be reconvened to the subdivider or successor agency. An interest, if not used for the public purpose originally dedicated. However, an alternative option to selling, where the city developing the property, is that the city can create a long-term lease agreement. With a third party to operate the property for recreational uses. The Alpine Vista Property Discussions, this past spring, we started, we, we've always been meeting with the Tillery. Uh, City School District regarding best clubs we meet quite a bit. During one meeting last spring, the Alpine Vista Property was mentioned, and we had a very good conversation about it. And then we decided to meet on the, on the property, and what, what the interests were with, with the Tillery City School Districts. And um, they were mainly interested in creating more green space for the Alpine Vista School. Ultimately, after several months of meetings, a lot of people involved, we came to an agreement and drafted a lease agreement to create a park. At the Alpine Vista Property location. The Alpine Vista Property, the highlights of the agreements are, there's, there's more to it than this. The, the city would lease the Alpine property to the Tillery Elementary School District for one year, for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years. The leasing will develop, construct, interconnect, operate, maintain, repair, and upgrade outdoor recreation facilities. And ingress, egress, and other accesses to the property twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days per year. Within four years, the leasing will begin to convert the land to turf, creating sports fields, sports courts, and, and a community center. The property may be fenced, but the property will be made available to the public during non-school hours, weekends, summers, winters, and spring breaks. Within two years, the city would install curb and gutter to the property, in addition, the owner shall retain a fifty-five foot long by twenty-two foot wide. Roadway access easement connecting to the north gate. roadway access easement connecting to the north gate of the water tank located near the southeast corner of the subject property for turnaround space for vehicles to maintain the water tank. Here is an overview of the Alpine Vista property. Got my green paint. So this is the property right here. This is the tank. The city would install curb and gutter through here. They all go. Curb and gutter right through here. This is the Alpine Vista School area. This is the green space they have right now. This is, um, a water retention basin. Um, but so that the, the, the tank, the, um, the roadway is here, and it would stop about fifty-five feet, which is about right there. And it would interconnect these two pieces of property. That's what's being proposed. Some other options for the Alpine Vista property. The option one is the option that we have talked about with the Tulare City School District. The second option is, is the same type of option, but lease the property to Tulare Joint Union High School District. And they have shown interest in the property as well. A third option is for, for the city to retain, control the property and develop a, a playground, pickleball courts for public use. City staff feels that the best option recommendation is the attached agreement because it provides the best public access for the most reasonable cost to the city in terms of capital improvements, maintenance, and liability. Staff recommends the city council approve the lease agreement and authorize city manager to execute the lease agreement with the Tulare City School District. Any questions?
Counsel, before you ask questions, if I can provide one quick clarification. Um, the, the lease requires the district within four years to either convert the land to turf or construct or construct a multipurpose facility such as sports field, sports courts, community center. But will not construct a facility, facility dedicated for educational space. I just want to make sure we're clear that it doesn't require them to do sports fields, turf, sports courts, and a community center. They have some options there. I just want to make sure we provide that clarification.
Well, I'll jump right in. Uh, thank you, uh, staff for presenting the history because this has been, um, that, that property has been there since, since two thousand five. And I know one of the times it tried to lease it to another nonprofit to do improvements that didn't, uh, work out. And, and in being there and being in the community, um, and being at community meetings on this property is really a lot of the, the property owners, families, children, um, and others. Really, I think there's a consensus about a green space, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk in use. Well, there could be a hundred different opinions with the property and I, um, I appreciate staff and working this and appreciate the direction of, of everybody involved because it gets us to where we want to go. We want curb, gutter, sidewalk, we want improvements. It's a, it's a facility, it's not a, it's not a grand destination point. I think that a regional park would be because that's it doesn't go over the top, but it also doesn't cut us short. And I, I like that we have met a, a very smart. I think it's a very good practical and common sense to bring in the school with this. They have the other properties. They take, they'll take the maintenance that is usually a big issue. And the city gets the improvements and the public gets a, a a facility turf, something that they can use as well. And we don't have to wait another, um, nineteen years, eighteen years for something to come in. So it's, it's a practical solution. So it's the best of both worlds to get us where we want to go. And the, so it's great. I think it's great news. And if I'm understanding right, and just conclusion, the city's improvements would be done to two years and the park needs to have all their stuff underway and completed within four years.
That is correct.
Fantastic.
Any other questions?
I got a quick question. Jason, whose idea was it to throw out there about pickleball courts? Was that Brian's idea by any chance?
No.
It wasn't?
Well, the city, we currently don't have any pickleball courts and, and we're working on some. We have some ideas where to put pickleball courts. We haven't brought them, uh, brought them to council yet. Um, but pickleball courts are, are on the horizon.
Can you put that, Melissa, put that, uh, picture of the area? Yeah, right there. Now, if a pickleball court were to go on that northern part right next to all those homes right there, would you want to live in one of those homes and hear the pickleball? Uh, ping, 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 all Sunday morning and all weekend as you were trying to sleep? Would you want to do that?
Probably not. And the other thing that pickleball courts will do, they will really activate an area. It'll become a regional destination.
The only reason I bring that up is I, I'm seeing litigation all over the country over location of pickleball courts. And I'm just kind of throwing that out there for consideration. Okay, I agree with Mr. Isherwood.
Any other comments, questions, or ready for a motion? Public.
I'll take that as a cue. I will make the motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Tulare City School District for the Alpine Vista property as described in the staff report before the, before the council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four to one. I didn't say anything. I guess it was me. Okay, and it's not even ten o'clock. Okay, let's see. All right, I think we are at future agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I presented this and it's really very simple. Tonight, what I'm looking for is a consensus by the council to place this on a future agenda item. And at that time, we could have a discussion if you choose to do so.
All right, so all we need to do is take a vote, right? You want to do a roll call?
Let's wait till Mr.
Yeah.
Oh. We'll wait for Mr. Isherwood to return. All here, we're going to take a vote. Somebody walked behind me. I thought it was him. There we go. Okay, we're ready to take a vote on, uh, whether or not it'll agendaize Mr. Harold's, uh, item. Yeah. Well, that's what we're, that's what we're supposed to do. No discussion tonight. No problem. So we have a roll call, please.
Let's see if there's a consensus to put on.
All we need is consensus.
It would be a yea or an aye.
To get it on the agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Harold.
Aye.
Councilmember Segala. Councilmember Maderas. Vice Mayor Isherwood.
Yay.
Mayor Sarah?
No.
Motion fails. Two to three.
So three to one, it is not agendaized.
Three to two.
On that note, we are adjourned. Oh, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute. We have to listen to reports. Jason.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment. Hey, Janice, I want to wish you the best retirement. Want to thank you for all the help you've given me through all those years in Visalia and now here. Um, I'm going to miss those phone calls. I'll call you. Hey, Janice, this is what happened. What do you think? She's all Jason. But, um, but I, I will miss you personally. And I want to thank you for all, all the help you've given me over the years. I wish you the very best.
Good evening, council. Um, just a reminder with the holidays, the next two weeks, the solid lease schedule will be a little bit different. Uh, the holiday is Monday, so if your normal day of service is Monday, it'll be pushed to Tuesday. If your normal day of service is Tuesday, it will be pushed to Wednesday. So that will be our schedule the next two weeks. So make sure your cans are out. We will have staff at the office if you get missed and you need it serviced. Um, just another thank you to Janice for all that she's done. I don't know if I'm going to thank her though, because she helped promote me in my position, but, um, she's going to be missed. And then just happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to the council. We'll see you next year.
Sorry, Janice, I echo everything that's been said. Um, look forward to watching your adventures on Facebook if you don't ban me. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you all.
I just would really like to thank Janice. Um, and Mark and city council. I've only been here for, well, since August. So, you know, a little over four months. But if it had not been for Janice, I would not have felt as comfortable in this community as I have. She has connected me to some wonderful people. Um, helped me buy a home here. And she even helped me spend some money, um, buying some furniture and things for my house. And I did shop local, so. Um, I wanted to wish all council members and everyone here, um, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and I hope everyone is safe and enjoys their time away.
Mushy part first. Nope, still going to do it. You stood up for me in the most critical point in my professional career. When you, me, and a person who will not be named sat in a room and your comment was somebody, Josh just isn't going to do it. And I will never, ever forget that. Thank you so much. Okay, that was the mushy part. Now, uh, Mayor, did you want to mention something about the
Oh, you mean I forgot that too?
The banner program?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Uh, Melissa sent out, uh, a notice today to introduce the banner program for the veterans and she has that to show us. People will be able to, to, uh, apply for the banner program starting January the eighth. Yeah, I'll let Mark hold it. So beautiful, beautiful banners. Um, we've worked with, uh, with Ambets and with other cities and trying to decide the very best way to introduce this to our city. So we're really excited about it. Edison is even cooperating with us, so we can use their polls. So it's going really, really well. Uh, families or donors can sponsor individuals. The two the cost.
Um, the cost of a banner is two hundred and ninety-five dollars. And that, um, includes the design, the production, the bracket, um, and the rehang. So these, these will be taken down. So they'll be flown from Memorial Day to Veterans Day and taken down, stored by the city, and then rehung up to four years, depending on the wear and tear of the banner.
Financial assistance will be available to any families in need. Yes, uh, it's the Mayor Terry Sayer Foundation. Who is, uh, we're actually handling it through the, the city council, the city clerk's office, frankly, is, uh, handling the application process. And a, and application will be available for financial assistance.
Talk about that later. I mean, you're able to do that, but you'll have a better response from a tax deductible aspect that people can do that and have it, have it deducted. And then that nonprofit can pass it on for that purpose. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, that's something to consider. The cities that we've worked with, um, to help us, uh, Reedley was extremely helpful. In fact, we just kind of really adopted most of the, um, their criteria. And, uh, so that's, that hasn't been a suggestion before, but thank you. That's a good suggestion. Yeah.
Hi. I'm not going to say goodbye to Janice just yet because she still has a couple more days.
Yeah.
So, um, she doesn't need to get that big of a head yet. Um, one of the ribbon cuttings that took place over the last couple of weeks was, um, somewhat nostalgic for me, and it was the surf through, um, ribbon cutting on J Street. And I think that, um, so that project, I've been working on that project ever since I started working for the city of Tulare in two thousand eight. And it was a project of the Orozco Group who actu- actually developed the, um, Packwood Creek in Visalia. So it was the static at the, at the time that the Orozco Group was developing. And they, um, stuck with us through the redevelopment agency days, through the disbanding of the redevelopment, through the city putting up the overcrossing, um, and bisecting their property. And it was so nice to see that final ribbon cutting of that whole center over there. So I made sure to reach out to Patrick and Chris and I sent them a picture and pulled them Tulare still will welcome them with open arms and, and would love another future development and thank them for their staying with us. Um, Merry Christmas to you all. I wish you all, um, just a, a safe and happy holiday. Uh, really looking forward to twenty twenty-four. Um, it's going to be a wild ride, so. Hang on.
Uh, thank you, council, this evening for attention on those couple of matters I had on the agenda. And just wanted to wish you all a safe, happy holidays and looking forward to having at least a few more days with, with Janice here, so.
I used to run these things and I can't remember how. I would also like to congratulate Janice on her retirement and thank her for her years of mentorship. I am very thankful for you.
So about eight and a half years ago, I stood up at a council meeting and none of you were here. And I told, um, David Macedo that, um, I wasn't your long-term solution, but I'm here now and I'll probably be here for a year just to help out. And every time I see him, he reminds me that I said that. Um, but, um, it, it is hard to leave Tulare harder than I ever thought it would be, um, harder than when I left after twenty-eight years with the city of Visalia. I have, uh, felt like part of this community. I will still come, even though I live in Visalia, I will do my dry cleaning here and my eyebrow tweezing and all the services and, um, uh, I will still come to Tulare and I will still be involved, um, in the chamber and the act, um, at the act show, the farm show and still see my friends here. Um, but it's hard to leave. It's hard. Um, I've had excuse after excuse after excuse not to leave. You know, one was robbed, said stay, and then it was COVID, and then it was, then we had a new city manager and nobody knew what he was going to be like. And honestly, as I sit here, he's one of the reasons why I don't want to leave because it's a little infectious. Um, when he starts, um, moving on things and you want to be part of that. So Mark, I wish you all well and I wish, um, the executive team is very special to me and I appreciate every single one of you and, um, you've been part of my life and you will continue to be part of my life. And Mario Zamora, I really am retiring. Thank you all.
You want to see her cry? I'll make her cry right now. So if it wasn't for Janice Abloh, I would a hundred percent not be here today. Uh, we had some tough times in the early twenty seventeen's and eighteen's and, uh, she told me to hang in there. And I did. And, uh, she encouraged me to apply for chief and here I am. Uh, she's our biggest cheerleader. She attends all of her events. She, uh, sits at all her tables and, uh, fills out applications and brochures and counts out flyers. So thank you, Janice. I love you. Going to miss you. Everybody else have a safe and, uh, happy holiday season and, uh, see you next year.
Why Janice? I, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Janice as well. I'm still trying to figure out if she's trying to get back at me for something for recommending we come in at that time, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and of course, thank you so much. We've had a conversation. You're the best, and you always will be. Uh, I'll be out of the office starting, uh, tomorrow, your next Wednesday. Josh is here. Did anything? Uh, I will be, uh, playing in a, uh, a school reunion basketball game. And so I hope to come back uninjured next week. But my wife will send videos and pictures, so Merry Christmas.
Well, on behalf of council, we just, I think we should end our, um, meeting this evening with a standing ovation for Ms. Avila.
And I already put away my gavel, so.